The Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, November 5th. Could I have everybody's attention, please? Going to start with some brief announcements. The outdoor farmer's market is over, but all is not lost. The winter farmer's market has begun and will be held on Sundays from noon until 5:00 PM in the Arcade Building in Coolidge Corner. This Thursday at 6:30 PM in Huntingdon Hall of the main library, there will be a panel discussion based on the book, "The New Jim Crow," by law professor Michelle Alexander, discussing how the criminal justice system has put a disproportionate number of racial minorities in prison and the long-term consequences of this incarceration. Changing the subject, this Friday and Saturday, starting at 10:00 AM, don't miss the annual Holiday Craft Sale at the Brookline Senior Center, 93 Winchester Street. Do you have anything you want to add to that, Selectman Daly?
Oh, no, this is always, always fun, and I know they look forward to-
Lots of neat stuff. I've certainly gotten gifts from there. And next Tuesday, the Board of Selectmen will be holding a public hearing on the proposal to add 192 units to housing, of housing, at Hancock Village under the state Chapter 40B comprehensive permit process. Also, next week, on Wednesday, in this room, the Brookline Neighborhood Alliance, the Town Meeting Members Association, and the League of Women Voters will hold a discussion on warrant articles that will come before the special town meeting in November. Any other announcements, comments for members of the Board? Seeing, oh, yes, I'm sorry.
That's all right. I wanted to take this opportunity to, just to let the Board know and the community know that we are embarking on a citizen survey. As you may recall, last year, proposed within the fiscal year 14 budget, the funding of a citizen's survey as part of the town's larger effort to quantify performance and to better tailor funding of the town's priorities, and we have chosen to participate in the National Citizen Survey, which is a, which is a collaboration between the International City Management Association and the National Research Center Incorporated. It offers a statistically valid and tested survey instrument with questions that are uniform that allows us to compare ourselves with other municipalities across the United States and for our own community over time if we choose to do the survey over multiple times. There is an option for a few customized questions, and we will take advantage of this, but for this year, we're focusing these questions on how we engage citizens in an effort to quantify the preferred methods and characteristics of communications and involvement in our local government. But I did want the Board to know another, so that in the future, we may wish to facilitate some more substantial customized policy questions as part of the survey. So just prior to Thanksgiving, 1,200 randomly selected households in Brookline will receive this survey, and we're really looking forward to seeing the results and more formally present them to the Board of Selectmen, the Advisory Committee, and others later this spring. Our CIO, Kevin Stokes, is here if you have any questions about that, but we are going to be letting 1,200 households know that they've been selected and will be participating in the survey over the next few weeks.
Questions, comments? Selectman Daly?
No.
No?
Sounds good.
I thought I saw your hand up. Okay, then we'll move to the miscellaneous agenda.
Oh, no, I actually just had another item, though, I wanted to mention.
Oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to remind people that the, this coming Monday is Veterans Day, and there will be the-
Oh, right.
Veterans Day observance at 11 o'clock on Monday, the 11th, at, in front of Town Hall.
Town Hall, right. Sorry, I forgot about that. Okay, and then we will move to our miscellaneous items, the first being an extension of the noise bylaw waiver originally granted. Members of the Board will remember, we held quite a lengthy discussion about a noise bylaw waiver for 46 White Place and, and took a vote which limited what they were permitted to do, and we understand that a combination of weather, perhaps Red Sox and other MBTA priorities have prevented them from completing the construction that was intended, and they've asked for an extension, and I just would like to say for the record that we've been advised by Town Council that we do have the authority to provide a time extension. So are there questions for, from anybody about this? I think we pretty thoroughly discussed it before. No? Do you have anything you want to add to what I've said? No?
If it's approved, then, then no.
Okay, all right. So, right, right. What I can tell you is that we're allowed to extend it through November 7th, which is Thursday.
Most likely, that would be good if the T.
Okay, if the T cooperates and it doesn't rain. I got it.
Right.
All right, well, I suppose worst case is we might have to do it again. So, members of the Board, you all understand what we're being-
But if it, worst case, they would have to be back here next Tuesday.
That's right.
So are we, are we limited to Thursday? Can we be a little more flexible?
I'm not prepared to say more than what I was given by Town Council.
Okay. Just asking.
I think-
I think that, that was what was requested. I think that's why she responded with that date.
Okay, so-
Is that what Town Council requested? Because that's not what I requested.
That's not what you asked for.
Said that the, said the T's granting, well, what-
What's the T giving you?
The T's allowing us for sure this week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and then after that-
Okay, so in fact, that's why she said the 7th, because that's what the T agreed to.
That's what the T's allowing, but they're, they're not saying up only then, they'll give us more if, if for some reason they've canceled us. They'll just keep giving us a day here and there, but-
But, but what was, just to clarify, what was noticed in the calendar and therefore what the abutters, if they chose to-
See the calendar.
See the calendar and participate in this had notice of was November 7th.
Okay.
So, let's, let's say we regret that we have to put the limitation, but we do now understand that we have the authority to extend the waiver, and so with good luck, you will not come back, and with bad luck, we will extend the waiver. How's that?
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay, all right. So I move that we grant the application of owners of 46 White Place Brookline for an extension of the noise bylaw waiver originally granted on October 22nd, 2013, after a public hearing, and extending the terms of such waiver through November 7th, 2013. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wischinski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
And next, we have some interviews, and the first person is Valencia Sparrow. Welcome. I see you've brought your assistant.
Yes. Well, we're pretty much a team. We are a team.
So-
Larry should stand with me.
Excuse me.
No, Larry's standing with me in case I lose my balance.
Ah, okay, sorry, didn't understand that. So please just tell us about yourself and why you're interested in the Human Relations Youth Resources Commission?
Well, would you like-
The short version.
Educational, oh, a short version, okay. Well, I'm interested in the Human Relations Commission because of the diversity in Brookline, and where I live is Coolidge Corner, and it's extremely diverse. You walk down the street, you hear at least eight to 10 different languages, and I'm reading in the papers, I began to become concerned with the statistics that were being reported about the hiring processes in Brookline, and whether or not they reflected the diversity of the city. And so I heard that this commission was one that would kind of help to monitor those processes as well as other issues, and I just, you know, I just, I love the city. I've been here for about 17 years, and I just want to see it united. And I think the one thing that really turned me to be here today is that I was in a CVS, and a woman and her husband with a, a woman with a baby carriage and her husband were blocking an aisle, and I had my wheelchair, and I said, "Excuse me." And she didn't look at me and ignore me. She looked past me, and I don't know if anybody knows what it feels like to be looked past, as if you're invisible, but it's crushing. And when I left, I thought, I don't ever want anybody else, a child, elderly, black, white, yellow, red, to have that feeling of being looked past. I'm getting choked up now.
Oh, please. I, I'm going to ask you a sort of technical question that, that might help you sort of get back into focus.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
But that's what brought me here.
Sure, sure, and we very much appreciate that. Are you aware of the bylaw and the fact that it's under review by, right now, by a diversity committee?
Now, which bylaw are you speaking?
The bylaw establishing the commission.
I've been told about it. I haven't seen it in writing.
Okay. Do you know what the bylaw says? Do you understand what being a member of the commission under the bylaw means?
Well, I understand that it means that I have to attend the meetings. It means that, uh, participation, and, um, if you're asking me, do I understand what I'm promising to do and accepting this?
Probably, yeah.
That, that's how I'm, I'm interpreting your question. Not totally.
Okay. It's possible there will be some changes, and I-
Well, actually, I understand that.
The committee that's studying this may recommend changes. That was part of the question.
Well, see, what I, I understood from the meetings that I've been attending, everything's in process.
Okay.
Because I'm not clear. Everything's being created for the committee. The meetings I have attended over the past few weeks, I've heard, well, we'll have the committee do X, or we'll have the committee do Y, or maybe the committee can do this. Well, what responsibility? Well, what power are we giving to the committee? So, no, I'm not clear exactly what I'm promising.
Actually, I think you got it pretty clear. It's in transition.
Mm-hmm. I know as an individual what I'll promise, and as an individual what I'll promise is to be there, to give 100% of myself, to treat each person with respect and listen to their side of, of the story, and see what we can work out.
Okay. Questions for members of the Board?
Yeah, I wonder if you have any thoughts or, on any programs or anything that you would like to suggest to the, to the commission were you to be a member that might further the goals you're talking about?
Well, I wouldn't want to be a member, but at the last meeting I had attended, I had, and there was discussion about funding programs for youth, I had mentioned that maybe a public-private partnership program where the companies that exist in Brookline could maybe do some type of funding or profit matching, you know, funding matching with the public to help the youth, I guess, get, you know, pay for their sports equipment or whatever. That was one. No, I, I'm not willing to be part of that. I'm, I'm interesting in, interesting in, interested in more of the disability end and looking at what's available for the disabled in Brookline. For example, during the wintertime, the areas for our wheelchairs are never shoveled out. So even when it's not snowing, or after a storm, a couple of days after a storm, we're still not able to travel on a sidewalk. We have to use the street because there's no way for us to get, to get off the sidewalk.
Okay.
The, the town actually does have a disability commission, too, and you might send them a letter or something.
Oh, I'll be, I'll be talking to them, yes.
But I mean, do, what, I, I, what about any programs maybe to educate the public about some of the challenges the disabled face, or?
I haven't quite thought about that, and the reason why I haven't thought about that, again, is because of the meetings I've attended, and everything is still in the development process. So it's hard for me to be sure of what I'm going to do when I haven't, I don't have anything solid to spring from.
Right, okay. Yep.
Could I just, actually, just make a comment? Thank you for applying, and I just wanted to make a comment about your concern about the shoveling of, of streets and so forth.
Boy.
The-
Yes.
The Commission for the Disabled actually has sort of a standing process with the Department of Public Works, and one of the commissioners of the Commission for the Disabled meets with Andy Papasturgen, our DPW Commissioner, and meets with Kevin Johnson, who's responsible for highways, and the town actually has made a real commitment to getting the crosswalks and the ramps and so forth cleared out, and if there's an area where that hasn't happened, I, you know, you should certainly get in touch with whatever happens with this appointment.
Yes.
You know, as a citizen.
Yes.
And this really goes for all citizens. They should get in touch with the Commissioner of Public Works, with Andy Papasturgen, and also the Commission for the Disabled. I mean, there's, there's sort of an ongoing process of meeting about issues of snow removal. Another issue that you're probably also very sensitive to is the issue of tree roots.
Right.
And causing heaves in sidewalks.
Yes.
And that's, and that's another topic that is kind of continually on the table, and as they get identified, the DPW does try to address them, so-
Yes, there is, there is an issue of tree roots, and, yeah, that, yes, but I'm, I'm not here to complain, I'm here to interview.
No, 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 but I, I mean, I just, I just thought that in, in light of your comment, it would be appropriate to-
Okay.
Let people know that, that there are ways to, to get these issues addressed.
Yes.
And also now with Brook Online, you know, you can take a picture, and-
And you just gave me an idea.
It goes, you know?
You just gave me an idea that the question was, what, what could I develop or commit to, and that is developing a program where people could become aware of ways to address the issues that they find troubling for, for the differently abled.
That's great suggestion.
Great.
Not only differently abled, but women with baby carriages, too.
Okay.
Valencia, I, um, thank you for applying, and you've told us a lot about your interests. I wonder if you could just fill in a couple blanks first. Tell us a little bit about your background, your education, your employment, and what, you know, what, where your expertise lies.
Okay. I'll start at college, of course.
Good.
I have a four-year degree from Brandeis University. During that time, I worked three jobs to help put myself through college. I had a work-study at the college. I was in a state-run internship, and I also developed a babysitting business on my own, while I maintained a B average, and I graduated on time. So that, that was happening. When I left school, I took some time off. After that, I became employed at the Department of Social Services as a fiscal analyst, so I worked with all their budgets and, and programmatic budgeting. And during that time, I also volunteered with a program called Youth at Risk, and it was a program that took, how can I say, young criminals, because they had to have less than two offenses with the law, usually violent offenses with the law, and it was a mentoring program. So I was in charge of volunteers. My job was to recruit people to do one-on-one with the youth, and once, and it only ran for about one year. That was not my fault. And we had a two-week camp, and that was staffed by volunteers, in which I recruited all the volunteers, I set up the staffing system. I didn't set up the system to run the camp. That was, that was a hired company that did that, but I did recruit all the volunteers, and I kept the volunteers there for two weeks in a rotating system. So that's part of it. I will tell you that I have systemic and central nervous system lupus, and after being diagnosed with systemic and central nervous system lupus, when I could, I set up lupus learning groups, which were different than support groups. They were learning groups in which I had other women, at least seven or eight women, come, and I taught them how to work with their doctors and their families, as well as teaching them about the disease. These groups were successful. I also was employed by, actually, I wasn't employed by Harvard Pilgrim Health Plan, but Harvard Pilgrim Health Plan allowed me to run a class in, in, within their program, which was to teach people how to, how can I say it? Move through their system, because that, ooh, excuse me. At the time, people had problems on how to move through HMO systems, so I taught people, basically, when you come in and you see a doctor, who do you, whom do you go see first? How to prepare to see your doctor, that type of thing. And the program was successful for the people that came, only there weren't that many people that signed up. But I would say it was successful because afterward, when Harvard wanted to run their own, the person in charge came to me and asked me for my outlines. So I thought that was pretty successful. After that, I, because I wouldn't stop, I did become sick, you know, worse, and I just took time off, and now I'm at the point where I can reemerge into public life and give myself again.
Great. Thank you. That helps.
Thank you very much.
And I bet you-
You're welcome.
I bet you that your grade point average at Brandeis was without grade inflation.
Actually, it is with inflation. Some people-
Shh! Don't say that. Never say that.
Okay, sorry. Okay, I won't say that.
Neil, do you have a, we have one more question, I think.
Yeah, um, one of the, according to the bylaws that exist now, one of the, the goals of the commission is to, and I'll, you know, read it, "Increase communications across racial lines to destroy stereotypes, to halt polarization, end distrust and hostility-"
Yes.
"-and create common ground for efforts towards public order and social justice." So do you have any thoughts on, on that, and how the commission can help move us towards, towards that, and how it can improve that?
I, I have read some of that, and I don't want to say anything wrong, but my biggest, my, my whole thing is action, and so my biggest thought when I read that was that I would rewrite this to have more words of action in. So I would put, you know, yeah, you do create, but in the creation, what does that mean? You know, what action does creation mean? Oh, I meant to tell you, I have very little short-term memory, I'm sorry. So I usually tape things and write things down. It's, it's really building bridges. Like I said, Brookline United, and in the way these things happen is really setting up, not forums, but setting up a place where people, in a fun way, mix. One of the ex, oh, oh, I forgot to tell you. Also, while I'm, while I was sick, I did some private coaching to businesses, actually women led businesses, and I also, there were, there were people who had children with trust funds, and, you know, after the children graduated, they didn't want them to just blow their money, so what they did was they hired me to, I hate the word coach, because it's so misused now, but basically coached your child, not in finding a job or finding a career, but in discovering what they really wanted to do in life. And I, and I did that with a couple of people, like I said, I got sick again, and one of the young men now has his own business, is happily married, and he's doing quite well. I'm so proud of him. So, and, and the other person, he's doing good, too, and he's sworn to be a bachelor, But, but these, you know, it's, it's just that there's like so many little things that just come in and out, in and out, in and out, that, that I would do, sort of like I go down and I get back up again, and I do a little thing, and then I'll go down and I get back up again. And no, this is not one of the little things that I'll do when I go down and get back up again, just so you know. But one of the exercises I did with the women was, I, and these women fought, they were all managers of five different stores, so I got them in a room and I took five different puzzles, and I mixed them together, and I gave them all part of the puzzles, and I told them they could not speak to each other, but they all had to put together one puzzle, and they had to trade the pieces. Now, each person, each group had to first find a leader and a person to put the puzzle together, and one to sort the puzzle, so by the end of it, they were working together as teams. I don't know what they were calling me, but they were working together as teams. And don't take my idea. No, I'm teasing. But those are the types of things, those are the types of games that I see myself, or I see us taking different races, you know, you know, which is a little different than finding somebody that, you know, slept in a sleeping bag, you know, that type of thing. It's like, it's, it's action, it's something, but then after that, there's a series of questions that bring awareness to how a person thinks, like, what names did you come up with for the person that wouldn't trade you for the piece? And they start thinking of all the swears they had in their mind, and if they, and you say, "You see, this is what you call a person when you don't get your way." And, and, and those are the kinds of things, and that's what I'd like to see have happen. And it may not happen with the whole city, but if we can get a small group, and that small group gets bigger and bigger, and yes, it might start with the teenagers, because children are so powerful in teaching the children, in their parents. I mean, with Breezy, children know more about service dogs than their parents. So that's what I have to say.
Great. Thank you. Very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're just going to go in the order, the names are printed on our list here. The next is Arthur Conquest. Good evening, welcome, and we'll start with the same sort of general question. Why are you interested in the commission?
First of all, Arthur Conquest, 115 Tappan Street, Brookline. First of all, Arthur Conquest, 115 Tappan Street, Brookline. I do want to say something before I talk about why I'm interested in joining the commission. I would, I would never, okay? And no one has ever seen me, heard me be rude, disrespectful, cantankerous. I just, that's not how I've been raised. When I say that's not how I've been raised, my mother didn't, who's been dead now for about a year, worked too hard to bring her four children into this world, to, and bring them along, to have them disrespect anybody. And I'm sure if she were alive today, and someone told her that I disrespected anybody, she'd get that switch, okay? And let me feel it. Even at my age, it just, it just wouldn't happen. So, I just want to make that very clear. I may speak the truth, but I'm not going to disrespect people. And I hear all these rumors about Arthur Conquest this, Arthur Conquest that. And it just, it's not going to happen. So, people may be uncomfortable with what I say, but I was taught to always stand up for what you believe and say what you think is truthful, truthful. Second thing. Today, exactly noon time, and I'm telling you about why I want to join the commission, okay? In a roundabout way. Today, at noon time, I went, I was walking to Selectman, Selectwoman Daly's house. She lives right around the corner from me, in up Rossin Path. Each of you, with the exception of Selectman Banker, should have gotten a flyer about-
We announced it.
Yeah, I know you did. No, absolutely. But I'm just saying that I personally came and gave you a copy of the flyer, according to what I was instructed to do by the mob people. And I was walking up Tappan Street from my house at 115. And actually, I had, I was, I had a winged short tune bouncing around in my head, sort of very dizzily walking up the street. And I heard somebody walking behind me, and I turned, I looked, and it was a white woman, white girl, white high school student. And because I was off in another world with my music, I didn't have earphones or radio. It was just my head. I was, that's just, that's just me 90% of the time. I'm listening to Miles or Duke Ellington in my head. And she passed me, and she took a right onto Gardner Road. And to get to Rossin's Pass, I had to take a right to, on, on Gardner Road. And she went to the, I think it was the north side of the street. And I walked cata, cata-corner and walked on the north side of the street. And she turned, and she looked at me, and I could see this look of fear on her face. And I'm just, you know, I had my running suit on. And she turned again, and she looked at me, and I said, "Nah." And she turned, turned a third time, and I said, "This can't happen." And she then made an avow, a bow face, and she turned, and she walked on the other side of the street, and she walked back down Gardner Road. And I said, "Brookline, 2013." I said, "Maybe I should call the police or something," because nobody would believe that this is happening in 2013. This is, this, this, it's unbelievable that I'm walking down the street, and someone thinks that I'm going to, at 12 o'clock in the afternoon, that isn't how we should be living. She should, I feel sorry for her. It's just, it's sad. And there's a lot of work that has to get done in this town, in terms of us learning to treat people as human beings. It just, and it, it happens all the time. And I'm wondering how we can go about the business of solving this sickness. It's, it's just, it shouldn't happen. That said, I think that, I don't think, I know, the Human Relations Commission is one of the agencies in town where I think we can begin to make a dent in this problem. Now, Larry One, myself, and Rita McNally went to Newton about 10 years ago, and we sat at meeting after meeting and watched them go through a process where they did exercises with the whole town in terms of addressing racism. And they have a, a black mayor now. But we watched the process. Am I right, Larry? We watched the process of them starting out with about 100 people, maybe there were 70 people in the room, but they worked on it. And they brought in, you know, people to guide them in this process. I don't think that the long-range goal was to have a mayor, but that's the ultimate outcome. And I'm hoping that at some point, that we can do that in Brookline. And the outcome is that we can have some black and brown faces sitting up there where you guys are sitting. Did anybody read the Globe today, the metro section? It was a wonderful, interesting story. I, I actually brought it along, and it says, "Mayor Hopefuls confront racism." Did anybody see that?
Yep.
Okay? I think that all you have to do, and I don't mean, I'm not being rude, not, okay? I'm just stating what's on my mind. I think if you changed the people that were interviewed in the, in the article, the people in Boston, if you changed it to Brooks Ames, and Mariella Ames, and Arthur Conquest, and Cruz Sinabria, you'd get Brookline in that same article. Just, just change the names. Because a lot of what they were talking about in that article happens and needs to happen right here in Brookline. Anyway, I'm sorry. Next, we, we, we have a question?
Well, I think we're going to try to ask the same questions, at least for fairness. So, my question to you is, are you familiar with the bylaw? And are you aware of changes between now and 1970 that would have an impact on the bylaw and the work of the Diversity Committee?
I've been to most of those Diversity Committees, as Selectman Daly, Selectwoman Daly would attest to. And so, I've been watching the process in terms of how that committee has been looking at the bylaws and what they think might have to get changed, and how that might affect, maybe it might affect who is on the, the commission.
Other questions from members of the board? Selectman Daly?
Yeah. I want to give you a chance to respond to this, because you started out by saying how you treat people with respect. And I saw an email from you on the Town Meeting Members Association listserv thing not too long ago, in which you suggested, because you didn't agree with a statement someone had made, that they were more like a house slave than a field slave. Did you think that was being respectful?
Sure. I mean, when I say that, I was quoting, wait a minute, hold on one second, and I'm going to answer that. I was quoting Malcolm X. And I have studied very, very long and hard the system of white supremacy, racism. It's not like I'm speaking without any educated knowledge about how that system works. And I think that, I don't think, I know, the greatest stumbling block is how the system gets privileged, or black people who think that they should, or they can get something for themselves, if they are compliant, if they are subservient, if they do as they're told. And they will be treated differently than any other black person who maybe doesn't have that advantage. There is something called the Talented Tenth, okay? And they see themselves in the vanguard of the black intelligentsia. And that, and I've heard, I've heard, I've heard black people say, you know, "If, if you're black and you go to Harvard, you should get some sort of special card so that the police won't stop you." I've, I've heard that. I've heard that from educated, uh, black people at Harvard. So, that's what I'm talking about when, when I make that, that statement. And I know that that kind of relationship still exists, in terms of how people, one black is pitted against another, and how one black is treated and others are not.
Other questions?
Yeah. I, I actually do have one question. In your application letter, giving some of the reasons, you said, I think referring to the Diversity Subcommittee of the Human Relations Youth Resources Commission, that it's your kind of group, and I strongly believe they have the potential. And you talked about them giving up their Saturdays for three-hour meetings, and Sundays for four meetings, or, I don't know, four meetings or four-hour meetings, plus their regularly scheduled, once a month, Diversity Subcommittee meetings, as well as the regular H R Y R C meetings. What were these Saturday and Sunday meetings that you were talking about?
There was a warrant article that was submitted, I think it was last spring, Articles Nine and Ten. It was one by Selectman, and one by that diversity group, of which I participated. And a lot of planning went into that. And so, many of the members of that Diversity Committee work, I know Mariella works, Brooks works, Tricia Connors works. And in order for them to meet, they would, they couldn't do it during the weekday because they have families. And so, many of the meetings were held on Saturdays or Sundays.
Then I have a follow-up, because if it really was a meeting of the Diversity Subcommittee of the Human Relations Commission, those meetings were illegal and outside the open meeting law, and I don't think you mean to say that.
Well, but I'm not a member of that committee, so, I mean, it wasn't-
You, you described it as the Diversity Subcommittee.
Well, there were, but Tricia's not a member of the Diversity Committee, and she-
Well, somebody convened it.
Frank Fong?
I don't believe it was a Subcommittee meeting.
Well, but maybe that was the wrong choice of words, okay? But it, I'm going to say, there were probably eight people that took part in that, and it wasn't just the Diversity Subcommittee.
It could have been petitioners for a warrant article, it could have been a group of citizens, but it was definitely, if it was the Diversity Subcommittee, it was an illegal meeting, not held under the open meeting law, and I do not believe that was the intention.
No, okay. So, I think you said it right, that the, it was the petitioners of the warrant article.
Okay.
Of warrant Article 10 at the time.
Okay.
Okay? And I just sort of lightheadedly, lightheartedly said, "The Diversity Committee."
Do you realize that if you are a member of the commission, you are subject to the open meeting law?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions? Selectman Wischinsky?
I'll ask the same question I asked Ms. Sparrow. One of the goals, in accordance with the bylaw, is to increase communications across racial lines, to destroy stereotypes, halt polarization, and distrust and hostility, and create common ground for effort towards public order and social justice. So, do you have any thoughts on how the commission can do that? Can they, is there, are there things they can do better? Where do you see the commission going in that area?
I think that that might be one of the, not the, but one of the highest priorities of the commission, is to be able to work to increase the interactions, but at a higher level, okay? I mean, I would love to be able to have black, Latino, and Asians interact with the school committee. And I suggested, and I'll send you a proposal, that I sent to the school committee, to get them to put a Medco representative on the school committee. And I think they're actually working towards that. I know that they have a liaison. But to do things like that, to be able to push, to maybe get, not maybe, to, to, to see if the town would push to have black, Latino, and Asian department heads, or heads of many of the Commissions, or the, I say Commissions, the boards that we have. I think we've got to be able to elevate, uh, black, Latino, and Asian people in the town, so that you can, because I think the most important thing is to share power, okay? That's the most important thing. And as it stands right now, and that's one of my pet gripes, that black, Latino, and Asians in Brookline have very little, that's the number one thing. So, that's what I mean by cross interracial communications. And as we stand right now, there are no, I think there, there might be, there are no blacks on the, on the Human Relations Resource Commission? Am I right about that?
There used to be. They resigned.
Yeah. Okay, there aren't now, but I'm saying-
All right, but at this time, but it's because they've resigned, not because there weren't any.
That's true. But I'm saying, let's push to have more black, Latino, and Asians on the commission, to re-elect them, reappoint them.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Start with the same general question. Why are you interested in being reappointed? And since you're a sitting member, can you talk about accomplishments that you would like to mention from your experience as a commissioner?
Well, I would like to talk about accomplishments. Unfortunately, I should say I have several disappointments. But the biggest one to me, in responding to the question of why I'd like to continue to be a member of the commission, is to work on, first of all, acknowledging the need for the commission, and acknowledging the problem from the top. Having a commission that has your backing, and a commission whose work is going to be very much supported by, by the Selectmen. And make, make the work of the commission, as well as the support of the Selectmen, be a model for the community. So, the biggest task that I think we yet have to accomplish within the community is acknowledging the problem. And the main problem for, in my view, is, is our lack of diversity, is the, the issues of race relations, complaints of discrimination. We can talk about education, and that is part of the, of the tasks that the commission has. And we, we have to work on that, too. And I'm sorry to say that we, I think that we have tried to educate. We may not have been successful yet.
Okay. I'm going to ask you the same question I've asked others. How familiar are you with the commission's bylaw? And are you aware of changes since 1970 in regulations and laws that would affect the commission and the, what, how, what do you know about what the work of the Diversity Committee is doing with regard to the bylaw?
Let me first respond to my being familiar with the bylaws for the commission. It is precisely the bylaws of the commission that drew me to join the commission. I, I do see the relevance of the, of the bylaws today, as I have stated several times, that despite having 40 years passed, it is still very much relevant for- that despite having forty years passed, um, it is still very much relevant for precisely the groups that were, the, the Commission was set up to advocate for, to serve, in fact. Uh, I am familiar with other laws, if you specifically refer to the open meeting law. If you ask me about the work of the Board of Selectmen's Committee, Diversity Committee, I am somewhat familiar with the work. Uh, I, it is pretty clear to me at this point that, uh, whatever their recommendations have yet to be, uh, passed and approved by town meeting. I also have, um, early on had, uh, mentioned that the membership of the Diversity Committee of the Selectmen, um, paradoxically did not have any members of the, uh, six petitioners of Article Ten, which, i- in reality, gave genesis to your committee, your Diversity Committee. And also, it doesn't have a legitimate representation from the Commission. So, um, in any event, it is clear to me that it has to yet be approved by town meeting.
And are you aware of the subject matter of that Commission, of that Committee? What it is, what it is about the bylaw? As a Commissioner, you do understand the bylaw, you've said that.
Yes.
So do you also understand what that Committee is attempting to do with regard to the bylaw?
Well, I would appreciate, rather, your educating us, as to what your committee is doing. As I said earlier, there is no representation, uh, from the Commission in that Committee. So if I, uh, if I am to learn much from it, it's either by attending, or, or by you sharing with us. So, um, I, I can tell you what is it that was charged with, which is reviewing the bylaws. It was also charged, at some point, was talked about, rather, about affirmative action There are a couple of other items that are there, that I-
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Sleckman-Daly?
Yeah, um, our most recent census data showed that, that the population in Brookline of Asians is up to about fifteen percent. Do you have any thoughts about how the Commission might particularly reach out to that community?
How, how, uh, yes, I'm sure. I, uh, I have several ideas. But again, the first one to me is, is to acknowledge that there is a problem. And we have been working on, you, you are very aware, we have been working on what the bylaws suggested, not suggested, state, um, affirmative action, and we got a block on it. Uh, we, we have been trying to work on the complaints of discrimination. Uh, we, we also found ourselves being blocked. Yes, I, I know we can reach out to the A- Asian community. And, uh, in fact, I believe that the person you hired recently to work, uh, for support of the, uh, Commission, um, is, um, the Chair of the Asian Family Network of Brookline. So, right there is somebody that we can work with and move forward here.
And thank you for acknowledging the Selectmen's choice of an Asian for that person, that position.
Other questions for Ms. Ames? Sleckman-Golsteel?
Thank you, thank you, Mariella, for, uh, seeking reappointment. You spoke a moment ago about, uh, your frustration at failing to educate and for, for, for people to learn, maybe not for your failure to educate, but for learning.
Yes, thank you.
And can you, can you put a sharper point on it for me? Who is it that you feel most needs to learn? Is it, is it the elected officials? Is it the staff members? Is it the town at large? Go, go into that a little deeper. How, how exactly has that failed?
Um, well, I can start with, with, um, I can start with the top administration. Uh, I, I do feel that the rejection to acknowledging that there are, uh, there are a lot to learn, um, in terms of race relations in our community. Not only, not only within the workforce, where I see, uh, the decision-makers having a key role to play in, in trying to make it better, and allow for discussions to happen, allow for participation, um, of, of committee members, employees, uh-
So do you think that the administration does not want to see a more diverse workforce? Or that they are not educated about the desirability of that?
No, I think that they, uh, they may say, we may say, uh, we are and we embrace diversity, we want diversity, but when, when the time comes to act, then, then the result is not the same. It should be, yes, we want to act, we are going to, to, uh, open up avenues to make it better. And to begin with is, is allowing discussions to happen. Opening up to new, new ways of doing things. Trying to make better proposals that are presented, rather than, that doesn't work, it is the, it, it, that belongs to this particular group only. No, you need expertise to deal with this, you are not qualified to, to, to do that. And there is a lot to learn from, if we have the problem of race relations, there is a lot to learn from those involved i- in that. Whether minority employees, minority members of the community, and it doesn't mean only black or brown, yes, Asians. Everyone has a perspective that not necessarily is the same, but it is different from mainstream white and people of color. Uh, and some do have a worse experience. And something that we need a great deal, and I really hope the Commission can bring, is trust. Trust for those groups to find a place where they can rely and, and have their issues addressed.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Sleckman-Wyszynski?
Um, you've heard my question, so I guess I'll pose it. One of the goals is, um, of the Commission's to increase communications along racial lines, et cetera, destroy stereotypes, halt polarization and distrust and hostility, et cetera. Do you have thoughts on how the Commission can improve in that area? And, uh, areas, and thoughts on, well, thoughts on how they can do, how the Commission can do it better?
Well, yes. Well, the first, the first step would be for the Commission to have a massively diverse membership. Then it would be to look for, uh, qualified candidates to, when positions often, open, to be considered for appointment, by you, I mean. So, so that, uh, we not only, not only do we increase visibly the diversity of our, of our work, workforce, but we also send the message that we are, um, we, we welcome different pers- uh, different perspectives, uh, different people. It is, it is in the modeling and in the seeing where things will then follow. And, and you understand me when I say things will follow.
Other questions for Ms. Ames?
I, I'm sorry, I'll let you, if you have any questions.
No, don't think so.
I just want to, as I say, thank you for the interview. I, I do want to repeat something that I said, um, at some point in the many meetings. Uh, I, I would not be here if I did not have it clear that, uh, there is a need, uh, for a Commission to exist in Brookline. And, and I do believe that with the recommendations that the, the Selectmen's Committee, uh, may make, I believe that still the need for a Commission will be there. Uh, and when I say a need for a Commission, I mean specifically the aspect of, uh, race relations, um, will be there. I thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Vanderzeil?
Thank you for granting me this interview and writing my application to be a member of the Human Relations Youth Resources Commission. I appreciate being able to talk to you. I've been a resident of Brookline for almost thirty years now. My husband and I have raised five children here. Um, they've gone through, four of them have gone through the Brookline Public Schools, and I feel I owe a, a debt to this town for the wonderful schools, the safe neighborhoods, the other things that we've enjoyed about this town. I haven't been active in, um, many town things, uh, until last year, and the reason for that is, in, uh, last year I retired, uh, from my position at Harvard Vanguard Medical Associates as an obstetrician and gynecologist. So between that position and raising five children with my husband, little time was left to devote to town activities. As you know, an obstetrician is often up at night and has very peculiar hours. But since retirement last year, I have, um, been involved in multiple areas now of volunteership between anywhere from the food pantry here in Brookline to the VU School of Medicine as a volunteer instructor there. And in May of last year, I was elected to town meeting as a, um, uh, Representative for Precinct Fifteen, and re-elected this past May. And, oh, I neglected to tell you, my name's Cornelia Vanderzeil, I live at a hundred Wolf Road.
I think we knew that already.
Yeah, you did, okay. So, um, and, um, I have looked, I have read the, uh, bylaw, three-point-one-four, three-point-fourteen regarding the, the current bylaw, and I understand and have been to the meetings of your Committee on Diversity, Equal Opportunity Employment, and Affirmative Action, as well as having attended meetings of the, uh, Human Relations Youth Resources Commission, um, some where there was a quorum and some where there was none, so there was no meeting, and also of the Diversity Subcommittee of that particular, um, Commission. So, um, I come to this with qualifications that are probably very different from most of your applicants, by nature of the work that I have done through my life. I mean, you have my, my resume, so you know what I have been involved in. I've had a longstanding passion and interest in the issues of social justice and discrimination. And through my work at Harvard Vanguard, and prior to that at Kaiser, I was a member of, and sometimes Chair of, uh, Quality Assurance Committee. This is the committee that is, does peer review of issues, uh, where potential, um, problems with quality of medical care are discussed in a protected environment. I've also been Chair of the Concerns Committee at Harvard Vanguard, which is essentially the Patient Complaint Committee. So I've dealt with those sorts of issues. And am very, very aware of the principles of evidence-based medicine. Um, and I would like to use some of that same, um, interest in evidence-based to address issues that the Commission may face. As an OBGYN, I've helped many women and, and their spouses, uh, or significant others, face some very difficult issues and try to navigate their way through these problems. And so I hope to use all of these skills to address, um, some issues of discrimination and injustice that I, I see in this town, which I love dearly. And as I say, I have a, a debt of gratitude to pay to this town. I want Brookline to be a town where all the residents and the employees and visitors feel empowered to raise their voices, um, uh, for the betterment of all of us. So because of that, I ask that I, that you appoint me to this Commission. And I am aware of the, um, flux that this particular Commission may be in, but I think that I can provide a perspective that you will not get from a lot of other people in town to this Commission. And in terms of Sleckman-Wyszynski's question about what I'd like to do, I-
You're not gonna let us say anything, right?
Well, I've listened to, do you, do you want-
It's okay, no, no, no. Sorry, it's, it's, it's typical, actually. We usually say to the last person being interviewed, "We're not gonna bother to say anything," 'cause you've heard it all already. Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, one thing that I have been thinking about, and, um, when I went to a meeting a while back, I, I don't remember when it was, it was probably last year sometime of the Commission. The, um, meeting was, was not held in Town Hall, and I would like to see the Commission go out to the community and meet in different meeting places around the town. And not only do that, but, but also publicize this, so that people who live in those areas will come. I mean, I can see going to, I live in South Brookline, that's not really considered Brookline by a lot of people. So I'd like to see us meet at Putterham Library, say, one evening on a Monday or Wednesday when they're open. Go to some of the public housing, senior housing, um, and, and be sure that people there know that we're there so that they can come forward. I, I would like to see this Commission be open to, um, uh, concerns that people in this town have, um, dealing with issues of, uh, race and other issues that they may see as unjust. I'm always looking for ways to make things better, so.
All right. Are there any other questions for members of the board?
I think she covered it all.
Thank you, pretty much, got it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And now we are going to move to the next item on our agenda, which is to consider an appeal from petitioners under Section Four, Chapter Three Hundred Seventeen, Acts of 1974 as amended, of the vote of the Transportation Board on October Third, Two Thousand Thirteen, to defeat a motion to relocate a new, the new Route Sixty-Six bus stop inbound, that is to say, uh, southbound on Harvard Street at Coolidge, uh, Harvard, at Coolidge Street, uh, to return it to its original location, which was defeated by a vote of four no to one yes. We have a petition which has been signed by more than twenty registered voters, which is required under the Act. And pursuant to that Act, by a majority vo- vote of the Board of Selectmen, uh, a, a majority vote of the Board of Selectmen is required in order to overturn an action of the Transportation Board. So this is a public hearing, and I just want to give everybody some rules, because clearly we have a large turnout. We're gonna hear first, for background, a summary of the Transportation Board's deliberations and decision. We'll ask if there's a representative here to speak on behalf of the MBTA. We'll hear from the petitioner, Mr. Rabinewitz. We'll also hear from affected butters who may not be residents of the town, and we will hear from residents of the town. We will not hear from folks who are here in support but who are not residents of the town. This is a municipal judicial matter, and you may submit comments in writing, we have received some in writing, but you are not going to speak tonight, except as an affected butter. So, moving forward, uh, who is here to speak on behalf of the Brookline Transportation Mr. Safer?
Josh Safer, Chairman of the Transportation Board. Uh, so would you like me just to give a little summary of events?
Yes, please walk us through the, uh, activities, and I really want you to tell us what the action, what led to the action of the Transportation Board, I guess. I think there's several years of history.
Exactly, okay. So the, uh, there was a multi-year process to revamp the route of the Sixty-Six bus in order to make the route more efficient, by streamlining stops, by putting stops into better locations for both safety and for, uh, uh, speed. That, that went the entire length of the route, but that included a, the stretch along Harvard Street in Brookline, obviously, as well. There were numerous- as well. There were numerous hearings, generally, and specifically by our Public Transportation Advisory Committee, PTAC, which was formed in part at that time to take advantage of things like this. And this was the prime example and their pri, their primary activity, in fact. I think we've, depending upon how you count, I've heard counts of twenty to fifty public hearings and meetings that went on over several years on this subject. The MBTA held hearings as well. We, on the Transportation Board, with each iteration by PTAC, held our own discussions of, of the, of those iterations before they transferred them to the MBTA, for example, and then finally the signing off on, on the final proposal. There was controversy in terms of routes that were removed, and therefore there was much publicity with regard to these meetings. The, so that beyond our public noticing, there was publicity in newspapers, the tab of the Globe specifically. The final decision for this, for the, for the streamlining, for the moving stops and such, took place in the spring of 2012. And the MBTA then had a specific budget for enacting that proposal with the monies running out in September of 2013. The, as, the process was such that they quick scrambled just over the summer and into September to finish up some of the, some of the specifics there. And that included moving the stop that's in question tonight, the one inbound, inbound towards Boston, that is, or southbound, depending upon how you want to think about it, on Harvard Street.
All destinations lead to Boston.
I guess so.
The Dudley destination.
From, from one side of Coolidge, from the, from the Brighton side of Coolidge, as it were, to the Coolidge Corner side of Coolidge Street. The, so, and that's when the, that's when the complaints that are before you began and came to us. We heard, we heard discussion at the next Transportation Board meeting that we were able to assemble. The Jewish holidays proved to be a bit of a conflict as well. And so the, the next meeting that was logical was in the beginning of October. And we heard the concerns raised by the owner of the butchery and various supporters and customers and such. The thought process of the Transportation Board at that very late juncture was as follows. With regard to this specific stop, the notices had been, had been significant, the publicity had been significant, the process had been significant, and they had not participated up until that point. The actual, this actual stop was not one of, was, was, was a relatively modest gain for the entire route. This is not a signalized intersection. It was a relatively small movement from the, from before the intersection to after the intersection. After the intersection is considered preferred, but it's more important when it's a signalized intersection, and this was not. So it was not highest in importance, and the minutes of PTAC clearly reflect that. I, I personally am open to the idea that if there was this much turnout during the process, to have kept it where it was, they might have had substantial influence on that. But nonetheless, it was moved to the technically correct position. Were we to move it back to the former position, then we would need to reopen an entire additional process where we would have to invite all the other abutters as well, who may be happy with the improved position or with the quote-unquote "new" position. We took into account parking as well, and the overall streamlining was relatively parking neutral. In fact, some stops were taken out, so I think we might have even had a net gain. But, but let's say that we're roughly neutral. So, we took into, to account those as well. Bottom line is that we voted four to one, with me being the one actually supporting moving it back. But my, but my, with my logic, only being that it was a relatively modest shift one way versus the other. But we voted four to one in favor of leaving it as it is rather than reopening that process for this specific situation. And the thinking was, one, we didn't want to open the process. The MBT, MBTA was not inviting us to open up the process for all of the stops in any case. If we were going to start to open up the process, we were already beginning to hear other small complaints or suggestions or thoughts for how people, how other abutters would like things done differently with regard to their stops. We thought that would be essentially reopening a multi-year process to no real significant gain. And I guess that's the bottom line for how we voted as we did.
Okay. Are there questions for Mr. Safer? Yes. Selectman Goldstein.
Thanks. Thanks, Josh. Is, was handicap accessibility also a consideration in redesigning these bus stops?
Yes. They were, so they were upgraded for that. There were some shelters that, there were improvements in shelters in some locations. There were a handful of amenities along those lines, yes.
So, can you explain what makes a bus stop handicap, handicap accessible? What are the physical steps that need to be taken?
The answer is no.
But we do have.
But I have that right here.
Mr. Karain, our Transportation Administrator.
Todd Karain, Transportation Administrator. One of the driving forces behind the entire projects that the MBTA took on to improve their ten key bus routes was a Federal Highway Administration ruling that all bus stops had to be made handicap accessible. And what that requires is for them to locate an eight-foot pad to pour a level landing on the sidewalk that is eight foot that matches up with the handicap entrance to the bus, which is actually the middle entrance to the bus.
I see. And does a, does a handicap accessible bus stop require more space than a, than a?
It depends, it depends on if, it depends on where it is located and what happens and how the street furniture plays out. You have parking meters, you know, obviously those don't play into it, but you have benches, you have trash receptacles, you have streetlights that might be in the way. But essentially, in terms of, if you're referring to the email that was distributed by the MBTA, what they're referring to is in order to get the bus into the space and pulled into the curb, those spaces on the near side require more space because they're pulling around cars and then have to maneuver the forty-five-foot bus so that it is parallel flush with the curb. Those on the far side require less space because they can actually just pull up directly. As they depart the intersection, they just pull right into the spot. They don't have to maneuver around any cars.
Get that entrance next, the bus entrance next to the pad.
Exactly. It's easier for them to get right into the curb without having to pull around cars.
I see. So more parking spaces would be lost to make that space handicap accessible if it were on the north side of the intersection?
Yes. Jumping ahead to, to what the MBTA explained in that email that was distributed to you, in order to make the bus stop handicap accessible there and to allow the, the bus to pull into that area, it would not only need the current forty, what was, I believe, forty-four-foot bus stop, it would also take two additional parking meter spaces to allow the bus to pull in and make that maneuver, which is seen, actually, if you, if you're familiar with the changes that were made, the stop in front of Stedman, before Stedman Street is actually on the near side because we consolidated two stops. And that is actually a very long bus stop to allow them to make that movement and pull in.
Yeah. Joshua, was this a point that was considered by the Transportation Board as they deliberated on this?
At, at this, at this juncture, I, I can't say this was that important. This was a consider, these, these considerations were, were the considerations for the original plan, so for moving it to the new location. But for not moving it back to the old location, we had not really considered that. Now, since we, since then, for what it's worth, the loss of parking apparently would become even more significant because there would be need for an even larger stop north per new, per the newer guidelines, that if we actually moved it back, we would end up losing more parking even than we had recognized when we were talking just a few weeks ago.
I see. One, one more quick question. Can you describe how notices of meetings are given, what, what, in what form they're given?
So, we, we send, we usually send written notice to abutters, and we always send electronic notice to the entire town meeting listserv. And then we use the usual town website posting.
Do notices to abutters go to the owner of the property or to the tenant or to both?
That is a good question.
I've seen Mr. Karain on the way.
Mr. Karain.
Yep.
Mostly the owner.
We actually do both. What we do is we mail out to resident at, if it's residential, with the address. And then we do business owner at the address. And then we also go from the, the assessor's database to get the owner as well. So those, those notices go out. We also post it on the town calendar one week in advance in compliance with the town meeting request, which gets emailed out, I think, to approximately three hundred people they have on their email list. And then we also post it on the town meeting member listserv as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Selectman Banker?
Todd, as, as I understand it, the question of where this bus stop would move to is not before us tonight. Is that correct? I mean, the question is, should the bus stop be in front of the butchery? And you had indicated that there would, to me, I thought, that there would have to be then another proceeding about whether it should move back to in front of A-Born Hardware or should move somewhere else.
My understanding is that this board has the authority to overrule the Transportation Board's decision to move the bus stop there. Because we would be moving it back in front of possibly A-Born True Hardware or another location, we would have to notice those abutters, receive their input, because as Josh alluded to, moving it back there has certain limited, you know, removal of parking spaces now on that block that affect those abutters, and it might, it would, I'm sure that they would have an opinion and would want to weigh in on that.
Yeah. I mean, I, just, you know, this, this letter from the MBTA or email from the MBTA, as I understand it, is not, I mean, that is a determination that has not been made by the Transportation Board, and that is not something that's before us tonight.
Correct. The MBTA could not be here. So what they did is they sent that email giving their opinion on explanation why they favored moving it in front of the butchery and the impact that might be occurring if we move it back to true, to their location.
That's probably a really crazy question, but what if it's just eliminated totally? No bus stop?
You would dramatically reduce the level of service for bus riders in that area between, between that stop.
But you'd reduce the stops, which I gather was one of the goals of this analysis.
Well, it was, it was many different goals. It was to streamline service and to improve service and to make it more regular. And one of the goals of the working group and of the MBTA was to create stops within a certain reasonable distance that would attract, you know, the clientele. If you were to eliminate this completely, I believe, and I'm just, I can go back to my notes if you want, but from the stop before it to this stop, it is, I believe, over a thousand, over a thousand feet. And then if you were to go from this stop to the next available stop, it's about another seven hundred feet. So you would actually be requiring somebody to walk a very large distance in order to get to one of those bus stops.
But again, that, Chairman DeWitt, is not something that's before us.
No, I just had to, may be true, but I'm still curious. I'm allowed to ask the question.
No, no, no. I'm, I'm just sort of trying to define the issue here.
Yeah. Okay. Yes, Selectman Woschinski.
So perhaps along Selectman Banker's lines, when, when, when you say it would be reopening the process, Josh, would it be reopening just this process or kind of the whole, the whole plan?
From, from, well, a couple of things, I guess. From our perspective, only in the, in the, in these couple of blocks. I, I can't envision how we would reopen. That, that, to me, would be just extreme. And the amount of time and effort put in already to just go back and revisit all of that would, would, would seem quite wasteful. Further, then the second point is, the MBTA was very engaged in, in this process and, and supportive, and we were very aligned. So I can't, even though I say we would reopen the process, that's even assuming that the MBTA would sign on. I have a suspicion that because of the controversy on these, on this specific stop, we probably could have sway. But, but certainly over the entire route, no.
Second question is, would there be a fiscal impact to the town if we were to overturn the decision of the Transportation Board?
Yes. It would be modest. We, the signs and the meters would all have to be moved back, essentially.
On our dime.
On our dime. Yep.
Other questions for the Transportation Board? Seeing none, I will formally ask, is there someone present who will represent the MBTA? And I believe the answer to that is, no, no one could be here. We did receive an email, which, for the record, I will read. It says, "We recommended the relocation of this bus stop to this location to improve pedestrian safety at an adjacent crosswalk and to reduce the overall loss of parking spaces. Making this bus stop handicap accessible requires that it be lengthened, and this takes away parking." The relocation would actually reduce, in other words, putting it in its current site, would reduce the adverse parking impact. But it also says we would be okay with going back to the nearside stop, except that it should be clear that nearside stops need more length and the previous one was too short. Therefore, moving back would take out two additional parking spaces in addition to using the previous bus stop location. Because the town had conducted its own substantial public outreach process, the MBTA held only one public meeting that covered this stop in February of 2011. However, MBTA appeared twice before the TAC to refine our recommendation. Okay.
So could I, could I just ask one question? There is a hydrant in front of A-Born Hardware. How many parking spots have been put back in? How many, we lost how many in front of the butchery?
The, the way that the MBTA looked at it is they looked at it by block by block, so both sides of the block.
Okay. But how many, how many spots in front of the butchery were lost?
Three.
Three.
And how many were gained?
Just on that side of the street.
No, no, on, in, in front of A-Born Hardware.
Yeah. Just on that side of the street, one.
One.
Yeah.
So even if you lost two more, as they say, if that happened, it would be a, a three-for-three trade-off.
No, because there was a gain on the other side of the street.
Correct.
A gain of two spaces.
Right. What, what happened was, right. What, what happened is, before the moves, on the block that the butchery is on, you had eight parking spaces.
Right.
You had three across, on the opposite side from the butchery, and then you had five on the butchery side. When you made the movement to put that bus stop there and to move the other bus stop, the outbound bus stop to the far side, you dropped down to seven parking spaces on that block.
No, I, I understand.
On the Anis Taqueria block, you had a total of nine spaces. You had five on the opposite side, and then you had four on the side in front of Anis Taqueria.
So what you're talking about on the other side of the street, you're talking about the switch with the?
The outbound.
Correct, the outbound.
The daily catch, basically.
Correct.
The, the space is taken away in front of the daily catch and the space is added.
Correct. So.
Okay. How many, okay. On the west side of the street, you've taken away three in front of the butchery, added one.
One.
In front of A-Born.
Correct.
On the other side of the street, you have taken how many away in front of the daily catch?
Four.
Four. You've taken away in front of the daily catch. And how many have you added in front of?
In front of the Citizens Bank, two.
In front of the bank, two.
Two. So you have from eight to seven, and then nine dropped to six.
You know, that almost, and, and that's on the You know, that almost, and, and that's on the far side of the intersection going toward Alston, you've taken away four spaces. I mean, it almost, this almost to me says you ought to flip that back also.
If you flip that, that, that back, you also will have to eliminate some of the spaces on the near side as well.
Yeah, but you've taken, you've taken away four and only added two back on the Alston-bound side.
Right. The, the way it works right now is you have seven on the butchery block, six on the Anis Taqueria block. If you were to flip the bus stop from the Anis Taq, from the butchery back to Anis Taqueria, the butchery would now have 10 on their side and Anis Taqueria would have three on their block.
Yeah, okay, you're talking about both sides of the block.
Correct.
I mean, I, this, this may have to go hand in hand with flipping the stops on the east side of Harvard Street as well.
That would have to be referred back to the Transportation Board because that action was in April of 2012.
As you were saying, though, defining the issue, I don't, I don't think that one is really before us.
Yeah, no, no, but I mean, I think, I think, I think, you know, this, the, the loss of the spaces in front of the butchery is in front of us. And I think if that is not upheld and it goes back, that, that they're probably in that block on both sides, there would have to be some rethinking.
Okay. I, I just don't want to redo all the work that they have done already.
No, 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 no.
All right, we ready to move on? Then I'm going to invite the petitioner, Mr. Rabinowitz, to come forward.
If the pardon is given, I would like to have, uh, while the whole speech on the property.
Yes, we'll invite him, but if you're the lead petitioner, you go first.
You got it.
He, he will have his time.
Stanley Rabinowitz, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Nine. I just want to go back into history to the point of knowing this location, I think, more than the Transportation Board do. But again, I want to say, one afternoon, I was sitting down watching television, minding my own business, and I want to excuse myself in front of all the rabbis here because I should have been learning and reading the Bible. But the point was, while I was sitting down, minding my own business, my wife comes in with a pad of paper and she says, "I have signatures that you're running for town meeting." And I said, "What?" She says, "Yep, I got all the signatures you're running for town meeting." She went down right away and had photographs made with little cards. On that little card, it said, Stanley, my first name on top, it said, "More help for the elderly." All right, so I took that into experience and a way of my life and I can't figure out, how am I going to help the elderly when a situation comes up, when you have a store that not only helps the community, but brings people from everywhere? And he's such a great guy, can't tell you, because he takes competition on his own to have other people who are in those locations and some of them are here and some of them come and give their products to him to sell. The point what I'm trying to bring out is that these people, young people and old people that come to the store, some of them have difficulties in carrying their bundles. Now, I heard from the Transportation Board and I hear from some people saying, "Well, what's the difference? They can cross the street and carry the bundle." But I had an experience, I don't know if anyone else had. I came home from the service, serving my country as well as a good friend of mine. We belong to the veterans together. And he crossed the street with his wife and that same location, he was hit and died. I had another situation where Tom China's across the street, right in that location, walked across the street. What happened? You never believe it. He got struck down and was in the hospital for three, four weeks. After that, thank God, he came out and survived. The other situation was that a woman was left off and this poor man is looking for a parking space. He drives down Harvard Street looking for a, for a pla, for a space. He comes right out in the front and accidentally hits two cars in front, three children in the automobile. If it wasn't for the neighbors and for the storekeepers, these three children would die because the automobile went on fire. So what I am trying to say to you, it's ludicrous to anybody ever thinking of really putting the bus stop in front of a store that does more business than any other stores in all of Brookline. And so I come to you and plead with you to understand two or three things in my life that went on. And there are many town meeting members, and I don't want to go through all the list because time is valuable and I know some of the other people want to speak. But my feeling was mostly the town meeting, like I say, I spoke to Precinct Nine alone and it was 90% said we should do it. And I was fortunate to having somebody who has my first name called me and said, "Stanley, I want to help, I want to see that sign taken down." And his name is Stanley Spiegel. So I said, "Well, the Stanleys, you can't win." "I don't know." He said, "We'll try." But anyway, coming back to the main point where I'm trying to bring out, that it isn't only where I feel, you know, jeopardizing the elderly. And my feeling was I've been successful in this town and I served this town and gave back. And the things that I was successful was, is helping the elderly and that was my main project. I went ahead and was very, very supportive with the 100th Center Street, which gave many of the people, the elderly, a home to live. I also was very, very able and capable to work along with a senior senator, which was necessary to help in Precinct Nine.
I think we want to talk about the bus stop, please.
All right. What I am bringing out, and I go back to the last point on this because I did feel I want to look out for the elderly. And when I talk about the stop, these are the things that I do feel that is very difficult, very hard, you know, for these elderly people going forward and carrying bundles. And now Thanksgiving is coming on and I feel that we're only thankful to you for whatever help you can give us so they can come home with their turkeys, when they can bring their automobiles in the front of the store and load them up with all the groceries and whatever they have, it would be a real thankful Thanksgiving. I thank you all and I'm sorry if I took too much of your time.
Thank you. Um, questions for Mr. Rabinowitz? Yes, Selectman Goldstein?
So Stanley, a couple of things I want to just clarify. There, there's no loading zone there right now, right? Is it parking spaces?
Yeah, they took away three, three parking spaces were taken away.
The loading zone is around the corner on Coolidge.
Right, so, but in terms of your last statement, that people will be able to load their cars, you just talked about loading their cars in parking spaces.
Right.
So make the connection for me. What is it about those three spaces that is especially...
The people come out from the...
Important for the elderly. I mean, do elderly, do elderly people use those spaces more than others or, I imagine elderly people use the bus too, right?
Well, the, the question is, I see it, that bus stop is completely in the front of that whole area between the three stores. I mean, we're, well, it's like three stores there, but it's directly in the front. You can't very well go out the back door where you're saying there is the exit or the, where you can loading zone. You can't go out through a loading zone. You have to come out through the front. If you come out through the front, then you have to cross the street. If you have to cross the street with heavy bundles and so forth and elderly people, and sometimes I always said to myself, when people ask me how old I was, I said, "21." I'm telling you now, I'm a senior citizen. And I walk across the street and I carry those bundles and believe me, it's not easy.
But Stanley, if I understand what you're saying, you're saying if those three spaces were restored, those three parking spaces were restored, that the elderly people would use those spaces and wouldn't have to walk?
I'm saying, I'm saying...
It seems to me there's lots of elderly people who are still going to have to cross streets because we're talking about three spaces.
No, but I'm saying, no, I'm saying this, you can't put words in my mouth that aren't true.
Okay.
The question comes up is that these people sometimes have to wait until a car pulls out. Once the car pulls out, they come in, but the idea was is for the elderly people to have the groceries put right into the car.
So that's what I was driving at. So what you're saying to me is that, that a lot of the elderly clientele there actually double park or circle the block until those three spaces are, are, are vacated? Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, it's a lot of, it's much more helpful to have the three spaces because if you don't have three spaces, then, you know, you're having more of a chaotic situation. At least you have some chaotic. I grant you what you're saying, but the less problem you have, the better off you are. And it's the least problem of putting up with the, we need more than three parking spaces.
I, I, I understand, I just...
But don't take away three...
I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to draw the nexus. You mentioned the elderly, the elderly.
Yeah, the elderly is right.
I want to draw the nexus between what those three spaces particularly have to do with the elderly. I understand it's better for the butchery's clients, more, three more spaces next to the building, next to the, the storefront, better for, for the butchery. I'm not sure I understand how that's particularly an elderly issue.
Well, I guess the question is, are you arguing that many of the butchery's clients are elderly and use those spaces?
Well, we have quite a number of them. I mean, I, I should have taken maybe some survey, but I do feel, uh, being in that store and seeing what goes on, I see quite a few of the elderly people there. In fact, the woman doesn't live here in Brookline, we have them from all over. This is a, a business that's helping other businesses. And that's why I'm saying, it, it'd be a shame, you know, to force a business out. We know Brookline has been top of the field and they've always gone forward in helping businesses to get ahead. In fact, we lost a couple. In fact, there was a Chinese restaurant which also served the Jewish community and had a close because they couldn't continue on their business. We also have another store that I came...
Is the butchery going to be out of business if they don't get these spaces back?
I'm saying to you that it can release some of the workers there if you don't get the, because I spoke to some of the people that are coming in. I mean, if you and I go down to the butchery, maybe we can see a little different. When the MBTA came down and I called them and I said to them, "Can you come down and see the situation, what's going on here?" He came down, he says, "Stanley, you're right, we should move the bus stop." When I spoke to our chairman, who's a wonderful guy, "You've got good people here as well as yourself." And that good person went ahead and he said to me, "Stanley, I see what you mean." And he voted for us to move the bus stop. The only thing is, I'm asking you and pleading with you in any direction to look at the safety of the elderly and the people that I know from the experience that had many tragedies and we don't need anymore. I want to sleep at night and wake up and know in my life that I went ahead and said, "I did everything I could to look out for the people crossing those streets." You drive the car up and it's much easier.
Thank you.
The only thing, the only thing I'm saying the Transportation Board could do, they could go forward and make it so the meters are a little shorter. They don't have to go through the two hours, but this is up to them. But we can't lose what we have. We need it, it's been there for 50 years. If, if anybody wants to take away bus stops, you know, they would own the business, they never allow it. Any one of you that lived there and owned that business, you would never allow it to happen. I'm just telling you.
Thank you, Mr. Rabinowitz. Okay, uh, we now, um, have an opportunity for abutting business owners to speak. Mr. Gellerman? Please come forward.
Hi, um, I'm Walter Gellerman. I'm, uh, um, one of the owners of, uh, the butchery. Uh, I actually have a prepared statement here and I'm probably going to cover some of the things that we've just finished discussing. In fact, some of the issues we just discussed, uh, with Stanley, um, I'm going to cover sort of from my own standpoint. So if you don't mind, I'm just going to go ahead and read, uh, read my statement.
And if you don't mind, could you leave a copy with our secretary for the record?
Sure.
Thank you.
Um, a few weeks ago, uh, three parking meters were removed from the front of the butchery on Harvard Street and replaced by a bus stop. Uh, it was explained to me at the time that this new location at the beginning of the block would be more efficient and safer. Um, and, and that was the reasoning for, for moving the stop. It was moved only about 30 yards in total. Uh, but the Transportation Board admitted, as we heard earlier today, that it was sort of an ambivalent, uh, it was kind of ambivalent about the move when it, when it made the, when it initially voted on this issue. It was passed simply because there was no opposition voiced during that meeting. Had I been at this meeting, I would definitely have objected and on behalf of myself and probably a number of the other businesses in the area. Three fewer accessible parking spaces at the front of the store is no trivial matter. And, and by the way, as we discussed earlier, these spaces will not be replaced elsewhere. There's, we mentioned the fact that there's a fire hydrant in front of the hardware store and for that reason, they weren't able to replace those spots. So there was a net loss of spots. And more important to, to me is the fact that the spots that we lost were right in front of the store, which is very, very important to our ability to do business. I know, and we all know, that parking spaces on Harvard Street are, are always a problem. Now, take these spaces away and the bad situation becomes much worse. As Stanley mentioned, the elderly, the handicap and people with young children are now more likely to have to cross the intersection in order to access the parking spaces. Because, you know, very plainly, there are no spaces in front of us, so anybody who needs to, to find a park, uh, to park nearby is going to have to cross the street. Now, where before, there were at least a number of spaces they could have used right in front of the store. Now, in regard to the assertion that the bus stop location will add to public safety, I believe that the opposite is actually true. Having to cross Harvard Street with bags in hand and kids in tow and possibly doing so on crutches or in a wheelchair will definitely not lead to an improvement in safety. And we talked about the meeting that was held by the Transportation Board early in April, in, in October, to review the placement, to review the, the placement of this particular stop. As we, as we noted, the board voted four to one against returning it to its original location. The four who voted against argued that the process which brought about the original decision was ongoing for three years and no objections were voiced in that forum and within that timeframe. It was their consensus that reversing this decision at this point in time would somehow constitute an affront to the process which they had recently taken, uh, which had recently taken place. I must tell you that I had no idea that these meetings had been taking place. The morning when I saw the meters being removed was my first exposure to this issue. And I was not the only one of the dark on this matter. In speaking to the owners of Kupl's Bakery, Kolbo's Judeaika, to True Value Hardware and to the management of Citizens Bank, these are all businesses within the vicinity of this particular stop, I found that none of them, not even one of them, was informed of what was to come. I recently also got access to a compilation from the Transportation Board of all the communications that related to this matter. I'm not sure, I'm not certain that it's 100% inclusive, but nothing that I saw addressed the abutters directly and nothing touched specifically on the placement of this particular stop on our section of Harvard Street. The, the compilation that I saw consisted primarily of newspaper articles regarding Bus Route 66 and the ongoing study to make improvements. The fact is that none of the businesses in this area were aware of this ongoing project and it, and it appears that there was no direct communication with the abutters. This leads me to ask if it was fair to expect us to attend or even to be aware of these board meetings? If the, if the placement of this stop is harmful to the well-being of a significant portion of our community and if it is harmful to a number of its long-established businesses, isn't it reasonable that it, it be returned to its original location? And especially so in light of the admission by the Transportation Board that there was really no overriding need for this move in the first place? Returning this bus stop to its original location has no downside and alleviates a number of issues that are harmful to the interests of a great many in our community. So I ask, please, do what is right. Do what is best for a large part of our community that utilizes and is dependent on this section of Harvard Street. Thank you.
Are there questions? Yeah, I have a question. For Mr. Gellerman, yes.
Um, Mr. Gellerman, am I correct that your establishment is the only sort of full-service kosher grocery store in town now?
Yes.
So if people who are trying to keep a strictly kosher, uh, table, um, would, would frequent your establishment? So if people who are trying to keep a strictly kosher table would frequent your establishment?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Other questions for Mr. Gellerman?
Has the movement of the bus stops affected your ability to get deliveries?
It does to some degree because sometimes when we get a delivery with a very large truck, and Brookline, as you know, is sometimes difficult to maneuver a large truck around the side streets. We have a delivery area on the side of the building where we try to get all the trucks there. On an occasion, when a truck cannot make those turns around, we sometimes need to make use of the front of the store to offload.
So since the bus stop has been moved, how have you handled that?
Well, on the occasions when that's been a necessity, it's actually a bit of a dangerous process. But one of us, one of us that works there has to stop traffic on Harvard Street and have the truck sort of back into the side street.
Other questions for Mr. Gellerman?
I just have a follow-up question about notifications. Since you heard that there was at least an effort to reach the business owners by mailing to business owner at a certain address, would you have any knowledge at all of receiving such a notice?
No, because if I had received that notice, I definitely would have been here. And not just myself. Like I said, I've talked to the other business owners in the area. They all tell me the same thing. They had no knowledge of this taking place until they actually saw the meters being moved. So I'm not sure what the reasoning is for us, but that is the fact.
I mean, I, could I?
Yep.
I think it's, I mean, I certainly give credence to the statement that notice was sent out. What I wonder, Todd, is, Mr. Corain, does the notice basically just say, "Hearing on Route 66 bus stops," or "Hearing on Route 66 changes"?
We mailed out a copy of the agenda for the Transportation Board meetings. Most, sorry, most of those were discussion and action on MBTA Route 66 design plan or something along that lines.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's entirely conceivable that that sort of a notice was sent out. And, you know, I mean, you wouldn't say in the notice, "Removal of bus stop in front of 428 Harvard Street." Or "Removal of parking spaces in front of 428 Harvard Street."
If I'd seen that, I would have known.
You know.
Well, I think, I was a little more concerned about our notice process and whether or not that would reach the destination. That's really my concern.
I believe that it reached the destination. I just think that it may not have sort of alerted people to what was going to happen. And, you know, that's nobody's fault. That's just an observation. And it sort of raises the question of how much detail we should go--
Is it an agenda?
Yeah, how much detail is in an agenda? I mean, you know, this sort of issue arises with zoning notifications, for example. You know, there might be a notice that something's going to happen, and it, you know, I know that there have been suggestions that when the planning board mails out notifications, that there'd be something on the envelope that says, you know, there's a request--
Right.
For a zoning change in your neighborhood.
Some sort of out, on the outside, right, right.
You know, "Open this up. This is important."
Right.
Slakman Wiszynski.
I personally believe notice went out.
Well, I'm pretty sure it was mailed. I was really curious about--
Yeah, but I think the question is, you know, what are we doing to really alert people to what the implications will be?
Right. Slakman Wiszynski.
Okay, so talking about implications, I'd like to explore. If this board were to, and this is, I guess, is a question for Mr. Corain. Don't get too comfortable. What would be the impact, and what would be the impact if we were to reverse the decision of the Transportation Board? What would that set in motion? Describe the dominoes.
My understanding is if you were to vote to reverse the decision of the Transportation Board, it only deals with this bus stop. And their vote was whether to, their vote was a four to one against relocation to the old spot in front of A-Born True Hardware. If you were to overturn that vote, it would mean that the town relocates the bus stop to that location. The MBTA would most likely then request an additional removal of two parking spaces, and we would have to have some process at that point to discuss that.
Slakman Banka.
Yeah, I'm kind of sitting here looking at what has happened at this intersection and trying to get a handle on the numbers on both sides of the street. And starting from where we started before any changes were made, it looks to me like we lost three spaces in front of the butchery, gained one in front of A-Born Hardware, gained two across the street in front of the bank, and lost four on the northeast corner in front of the Daily Catch. So just in this intersection, in this little commercial area, we're down four spaces as a result of these changes. Three of those spaces being in front of the butchery, lost in front of the butchery, where people are taking out bags, and two of those spaces gained in front of a bank, where people are not taking out bags unless they're very, very wealthy.
Or have no business with them.
So, and looking at what would happen, I mean, I'm inclined to vote to reverse the decision of the Transportation Board with a recommendation that the Transportation Board can consider changes also in light, you know, as you've said, you know, this isn't automatically going to go back to where it was. That will open up a new process. I would actually recommend that the board look at changes on the east or northbound side of the street, where, you know, you've gained two spaces in front of a bank and lost four spaces in front of the Daily Catch location. And--
And the bank has its own parking.
Yeah, and I mean, if you, even taking the worst case, where, as the MBTA has said, "We're going to have to lose two spaces from where we were in front of A-Born Hardware," and even assuming that that happens across the street at the bank, you're going to have to lose two spaces, you'd be down four spaces in the intersection from where it was before all of this started, which is the same amount that you're down now, except those spaces would be lost in front of the bank as opposed to in front of the butchery. And to my mind, that, you know, particularly where the, you know, if you went down two spaces in front of the bank across the street--
You went down two spaces in front of the bank.
And you gain the four back in front of the Daily Catch. So you'd be net, you'd be net loss of two on the other side, you'd be net loss of two on this side. But the locations, I think, would be far less sensitive locations in terms of what people are doing. You know, as I said, and as Chairman DeWitt said, the bank has its parking lot, and the bank doesn't have customers who are carrying bags in and out. So that's my two cents as to where I'm thinking we should go.
But there, I'm sorry.
Well, actually, we did actually want to see if there were any other members of the public who wanted to speak. So I, in my mind, I have a few more possible public comments, and then we'll get to our internal debate. First of all, are there any other business Butters present who would like to comment? Okay, are there any Route 66 bus riders here who would like to comment? Sir, please, please, you have to come over to the microphone. And just give us your name. Identify yourself for the record.
My name, my name is David Pearlman. I do take the bus, but one thing I would like to see, in a way, we have to have the bus stop there, in a way, we have to have the parking spaces there because the MBTA has the ride there, when they drop off people there and pick them up. That's the ride that they have.
The ride?
Yeah.
Yes.
And also buses from the different other elderly contractors come down and--
So vans you're talking about, small buses, not like the MBTA bus?
Yeah, small vans.
I see, yeah. I'm sorry, please come to the microphone. You're--
I think David is referring to the fact that a lot of these elderly places--
Please stop, start over again, into the mic, because this is all being recorded, and otherwise, your voice has not been heard.
I believe that what David is referring to is the fact that there are a lot of people come who get, I think it's called the ride.
Yes.
Where they can't come on their own.
The ride for people with disabilities.
And that's correct. And people from perhaps elderly houses, housing that have special transportation, they need a place to park in front of the stores. It's very useful for them to have something like that, whereas right now, they could not do that. And I think that's what David--
So they're coming to shop at your--
Correct. It's a way for them to get a ride to shop, otherwise--
Okay.
There really isn't a convenient place for them to stop.
Okay.
But is that an argument to keep the bus stop in front of the stores? Because then the ride can drop off the patrons right in front of the store. If there's parking in front of the store, I would imagine in most instances, that parking has cars in it. And where would they--
Sometimes, yes. Sometimes, no. You're right. I mean, it goes both ways in that regard. But also, another issue, and one of the customers who was here tonight, she wanted to talk, but she can't talk because she lives in Newton, asked me to just bring up the fact that she doesn't have handicap plates, and there is no handicap parking in the area. And it would be useful, perhaps, that one of these spaces, or a couple of these spaces, once they're returned, might be designated as such for a handicap.
I don't want, I don't think you want a couple of them, maybe one.
Not before us at this time, but I did see one other bus rider handout there.
My name is Tommy Vitolo. I live at 153 University Road and take the 66 bus from the Brookline Village area to Harvard Square and back. And I'm pleased to say that the ride through Brookline is far more pleasant than the part through Alston, which is much slower. I also sat in on a number of the PTAC meetings and was an observer, and as you know me, occasionally a participant of the process throughout. Someone mentioned already that there's no benefit to putting the bus stop in the location it is in right now, and that's, of course, absolutely not true. There's a very specific reason to put it where it is, and that is, it gets it in front of the crosswalk. So when the bus riders get out of the bus, the ones that are crossing the street are behind the bus, not in front of it. And that means that the bus can let its riders off and go. It doesn't have to wait for the riders that let off to cross in front of it. And so we're talking five seconds, eight seconds, not minutes, certainly. But in fact, none of the changes of any of the stops along the route will save minutes. It's seconds here, seconds there, and they add up. There's a lot of bus stops on the route. And I want to point out that, you know, the hardware store doesn't just sell helium balloons. There are heavy packages coming out of that hardware store. A bag of soils, 40 pounds. A bag of Portland cement is 80 pounds. And so for every argument that someone might like to park in front of the butchery because they have something heavy or large, you could make a similar argument that someone would want to park as near the hardware store as possible. And more to the point, we move bus stops about every 50 years. That's about the timeline by which we move bus stops around. And so to pinpoint the location of a bus stop based on the current location of a particular business, and with all due apologies to the butchery, I hope you're there 50 years from now, but the odds are, in fact, you won't be. You'll probably find a much better location, just slightly down the street, bigger, and with a parking lot, and it'll be great. The point is that you don't put a bus stop at a particular location because of the businesses that are near it, simply because the businesses turn over much faster than the location of the bus stop. So you choose the bus stop based on the right location for a bus stop, and you hope that it doesn't have a particularly negative impact on any business. And you also, by the way, try to remember, there are positive impacts to having a bus stop near your business, too. Not everyone, even in Brookline, drives around, and I'm sure we'll get into that in Warren Article 10. So it is a positive benefit for bus riders. It's a positive benefit for me personally when I'm going from Harvard Square to or from Brookline Village, which is the closest Route 66 bus stop to where I live. And I think it's easy to forget that there's thousands and thousands and thousands of riders of the 66 bus every day who benefit from each of these small changes. And there's maybe two of us in the room now. After all, most of us wouldn't even be allowed to speak since most of the 66 riders don't live in Brookline. We'd be allowed to submit writing, I suppose. Now, I happen to live in Brookline, so I have the esteemed privilege of speaking tonight. And maybe I'm speaking for thousands of riders when I say, "Yeah, it's 10 seconds every time you go through that stop every day." And they add up by thousands of riders. And, you know, we talk about a diverse community. Well, I got news for you, bus riders. If you've ever been squished on a 66 bus, you'll know. Bus riders represent a diverse community, and, you know, we'd like good service. So I encourage the board of selectmen to consider that there's an awful lot of Bus 66 riders who aren't here, and that they are important members of our community, many of them. They're either coming or going here. They're shopping in Coolidge Corner. They should be considered as well. And that there is a positive improvement to the riders for its location now as opposed to in front of the hardware store. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Are we heard enough?
Well, I think there's a lot of people, I think we should hear from a few other people who wanted to speak.
If there are people who are Brookline residents who would like to speak, we'll take a few. All right, let's let some other people speak first, all right? So over here. Yeah, I think I'm talking to you, the lady in the red.
Ladies first.
I don't, I'm not a rider of the bus.
I don't care whether you're a rider. If you're a Brookline resident, you're welcome to come forward and speak on this subject. Just come around and speak into the microphone.
My name is Sylvia Tuckman. I have been a resident of Brookline for 65 years now. I have been buying at the butchery for at least 50 years, I think maybe 54 years. I'm not sure when the butchery opened, but I was one of the first customers. What I'd like to say is that the parking spaces, I wasn't even aware of the parking spaces in front of the butchery when I was young. I'm now an elderly person, Stanley. And as such, I have discovered that I used to always park on Coolidge Street. Didn't matter how far back I had to park because I could walk. When you reach a certain point in life, you find that maybe it's a little more difficult. And I used to look for parking spots closer and closer to the store because I do shop weekly, and when I shop, I do have a great number of bundles. And it's, as I got older and I needed to have more ease in getting the bundles, I parked closer and closer. I have now found that I need those parking spots in front. I take an 88-year-old sister-in-law of mine shopping weekly. I can drop her off and circle until I can find a close parking spot. I can tell you that it is very frustrating, even trying to park across the street. There are the walk sign, not the walk sign, well, when I walk down to the walk sign, that's fine, but if I, it's easier for me if I can find parking close to Harvard Street, which is very rare, on Coolidge Street. I can, if I do have to cross the street at any point, I find that I'm, if I'm carrying bundles even, I find that it's very, very difficult to get across because people do not stop necessarily when you're in the crosswalk. So it really is a very scary situation. Aside from that, it's, I try to find, when you talk about, I know you quest-- Aside from that, it's, I try to find, when you talk about, I know you questioned why Stanley was referring to elderly people going shopping, during the daytime when there's a problem parking, then you find more older people who are now retired shopping. In the evening is when younger people go shopping and that's, I don't know what it would be anymore but they don't have, they have more empty spots because a lot of the other stores may not have the same type of shopping people and the bank is closed, sometimes you're not supposed to use the bank but some people might and, you know, and go there in desperation. So it's, and that's even people who can cross in the street to get to the other side, should you find a spot across, then it's difficult but you do get across, but when you're older you do need to find the spots and I was able to find them until recently, until they, I was out of the country, I came back, shopping from that point on has been just, not a fun situation, it's been very difficult. So that's...
Thank you.
My two cents.
Good evening, thank you Madam Chair, members of the Board, Mr. Kletner, Ms. Parks. Brian Kane, 4 Lincoln Road, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 6, what else have I got to say? I'm an employee of the MBTA but I'm not speaking for the MBTA tonight, I'm a former member of the Transportation Board, I am a former, it's former liaison to the Public Transportation Advisory Committee and I led the Route 66 improvement process on behalf of the town in my capacity as a member of the Transportation Board. That process began four years ago and we met, I met on this topic in, serving on various committees and boards for over three years. We did what I thought was one of the most open and transparent processes this town has ever seen and I guess I was wrong and I do regret that we've come to this point. When I started this process, I literally walked up and down Harvard Street, I talked to the Chamber of Commerce, they signed off on our plan, I talked to the Coolidge Corner Merchants Association, they signed off on our plan, I met with the administrator at the KI Temple, I met with numerous other religious leaders, St. Mary's Church being one of them, but I guess I missed the butchery, I just missed it and, you know, shame on me I guess, but be that as it may, I hasten to add that in addition to that shoe leather, we had over fifty public meetings, if you count the ones the T did on the 66 itself, if you count the ones the Transportation Board had, you count the ones PTAC had and if you count the ones the Route 66 Working Group had, all duly noticed, all minutes kept, all public record, all, we checked all the boxes. In addition, we had seven public hearings, seven public hearings on this topic. Very little controversy except the few circumstances, this one never came up. I hear what you're saying on the fact that the tenant or the property owner or the occupant was notified and probably didn't read the letter or didn't understand it and I'm with you, but, you know, as a person who tries to make positive change in this town, I'm asking you, and I don't think it's fair that you now punish me because a failed process might have took in place, when I hit all of the targets on that process, I did everything right on the standards and the process as it existed at the time, and to hear you now say that we have to go back and redo that process, maybe we do, but I did everything that was expected of me and then some, and to now be here tonight to hear you say that that process may have been flawed, well maybe it was but it was what it was and I hit all of the standards and I did everything right in my opinion, maybe people disagree with me, but if that's not enough, if that's not enough, and maybe it's not enough, I would ask you tonight if you do vote to overturn this decision, tell me what else I have to do. Tell everyone who wants to make positive change in this town what else they have to do. Is it fifty-one public meetings? Is it eight public hearings? Do we have to get in the Herald as well as the Globe? The Patch as well as the TAB? What are the standards that we have to hit to make positive change if this isn't enough? I also ask, I'd like to go back to the notion of the way that this all happened, the timeline. April 2012, the Transportation Board took a vote to authorize these actions to occur. The MBTA then, as I understand it, and again I'm not speaking for the T but I have had conversations with the people in charge of that, took that authorization as a done deal. They waited the sixty to ninety days as required in the Transportation Board's enabling legislation before taking any action. Once that cooling-off period and appeals process was exhausted, they began their own process to go through this again. So the vote was taken in April of 2012. I would suggest that, you know, you check with Town Council tonight if this hearing is even valid. The opportunity for the proponents tonight to go through this process was from April to July of 2012, we're now in November of 2013. I would suggest to you that this is not even a valid hearing. I would suggest to you that the Transportation Board's hearing last month was in fact also invalid, that the Board held the hearing because it's what the Board does, they listen to the town citizens and it's probably the right thing to do, but if we're talking about the validity and the sanctity of the process, I would ask you to please go back with Town Council and make sure that this is even a valid hearing tonight. If you vote tonight to overturn this thing, if you're, if we're, if it is a valid action being taken and if that is decided and you decide to go forward, let's be very clear about what will happen. The town of Brookline will have to go through a new public process to move the stop from where it is currently because as far as I would suggest the public authorities are concerned, the stop's location is the new location. We can't go back. To go back would require a full-blown public process on that, probably involve the town's traffic calming policy which you adopted recently, probably require a committee of seven or a DAT or whatever is called for in the policy, I forget right now, but it would not be quick. In the meantime, you would also have to have the MBTA come out and make sure that the new stop meets ADA requirements for eight feet and for flatness, we don't know if that exists right now, we do know that the current location meets ADA requirements, we don't know if the stop you, if the location you choose to move back to does or any other stop does and it would take a full-blown process, process for which I hasten to add no budget exists in the town or at the MBTA. I'd like to discuss briefly the notion of what I call the three magic parking spaces in front of the butchery, these parking spaces that are always available when a little old lady drives down her Buick Sabre and can't see over the steering wheel, always available, always readily available parking. It is...
It's a little decorative.
Thank you. They would have you believe that there's always these three parking spaces available whenever they have to pull up to the, in front of the butchery. Now you people have driven up and down Harvard Street probably more than I have, you know that this is not the case, you know that that is always parked up, so the notion that there's always readily available parking must be discounted, I would suggest to a large extent because we know that that is just simply not the case. We know that people have to park elsewhere and will have to carry bundles some distance to their car. I also hasten to add that there's six other magic parking spaces available on that block now. So finally, on the 66 itself, I mean look at, it's a bus, no one likes the bus, it's the Rodney Dangerfield of public transportation, we know that. We also know that it is the busiest route that the MBTA has, it carries fourteen thousand five hundred and sixty-seven people a day. It has currently the lowest on-time performance in the system but we know it is getting better. Last month was the highest OTP we've seen in seven years, now it's been a month and we can't say that it's because of this process or not and it's certainly not because of this move, but we know it's getting better and we know we want to keep it getting better. We also know that the demographics of bus riders are, tend to be people who are not as wealthy as many of us here tonight, who are of a different socioeconomic and racial class than some of us, so we know that there are options that these people also deserve free and readily available public transportation. The, I'm almost hesitant to bring, hesitate to bring this up, but the bus stop right now, no, I'm going to keep talking.
Please conclude.
How long does he get to...
Mr. Kane, we really do need to hear from others.
Okay, I beg your pardon. The bus stop now will allow the ride to pull up directly in front of the store, the ride is allowed to use the bus stop, and the bus stop location currently will allow people with bundles to put it in their car if they stop very quickly and although I'm not supporting that, it might make it a little easier for people. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to take, let's see, you in the second row in the plaid shirt, wait a minute, in front, you, sorry. I see two other sets of hands right behind you, second person, and then back in the back, yes, you with your hand up. If you three would come over here, line up and we'll be glad to hear from you.
Two minutes.
I think that will conclude.
Two minutes.
Yes, and please keep your comments brief if you can.
I will work to keep my comments briefer than the previous speakers.
Okay, and just identify yourself...
My name is David Pomeranz, I live at 99 Mason Terrace in Brookline. I may need to approach a couple of the name placards so I can direct my comments specifically because there were questions and issues that were raised. I'm glad that Mr. Kane is here this evening because as the author of the MBTA Working Group, I'd requested in the October meeting of the Transportation Board a copy of this report, I have finally received a copy of it this evening, I've had an opportunity to peruse it quickly, but what was I think most interesting to me was the testimony that Mr. Kane gave privately to me a month ago and gave publicly here to you tonight that during the course of his shoe leather efforts, the one Jewish location that he happened to have contact with was the administrator at K Lat Israel, and one of the things I think that one would find is that the butchery draws its clientele from a significant part of Brookline and not just Brookline but also other areas. Now Mr., forgive me for approaching that, Ben Chazewer?
Mr. Goldstein.
Goldstein, thank you. Mr. Goldstein raised the issue of senior citizenship. It turns out that the Young Israel of Brookline which is located at 62 Green Street is in the process of changing, our rabbi is approaching the end of his tenure and we're in the process of hiring our next rabbi and one of the individuals behind me, David Zimbal, is one of the leaders in that effort, and as part of that effort, there's been a survey of the membership and as part of that survey they talk about what the demographic, socio-demographics are. So if the Selectmen are interested in finding out as an example of Young Israel membership which are significant shoppers at the butchery, then I would suggest you look to the survey results and I believe just one statistic alone, the average age of the Young Israel membership and we're the largest Orthodox synagogue in New England, three hundred members or so, is fifty years of age, but you can get the age brackets from that particular survey. Now Mr...
I'm Mr. Benka.
Benka.
...raised the issue of spaces which I'm glad is, as we speak my twenty-two-year-old is teaching, or tutoring my sixteen-year-old in philosophy and math and one of the principles are, you know, things which appear to be identical may not necessarily be identical. A parking space may or may not be equal to another parking space and I would respectfully submit to one of the individuals who testified on behalf of the Route 66 bus route that Avorn Hardware has packages as well, but I would submit that the number of clientele, the foot traffic per square foot of the individuals who use the butchery is going to be much higher than you'll find in Avorn Hardware if one is to do a survey of their square And then the final point I'd like to make and I think this was the same individual who made the point, had to do with longevity of the stores and that bus stops only changed once every fifty years and I was curious to ask Mr. Gellerman and I'll just report to you what he says to me, how long has the butchery been at its current location please?
Just about that, fifty years.
About fifty years, and at some point of course it'd be useful to find out how long Avorn Hardware has been at its location. Thanks for listening to my testimony.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Ron Scharf, I'm a Brookline resident. I'll try and be brief, there are two things that I heard here that are sort of sticking with me. The arguments in favor, the Transportation Board sticking to where it was seemed to fall into, we gave adequate notice though the description of that notice was very vague. I heard it said multiple times, I never heard what was the notice, I think Selectmen Benka very incisively intuited that the notice was probably too vague for the affected people to know what was going on because, you know, this is what, a legal axiom, resiploquiter, the thing speaks for itself, when the people found out, they showed up. And I think that it's not fair to stand on that notice when we see what happened when people actually noticed what happened. And the other thing that I've heard, you know, the Transportation Board which actually I find very disappointing, seems very vested in the fact that the thing is done, that's not good enough, right? When you see that people who are affected care enough to come out on an evening and speak their mind, if the thing is done but it wasn't done right, maybe the thing should be redone. And what I heard is the worst thing that's going to happen if this Board overturns what the Transportation Board did is there will be another process and if that process adequately notices the affected abutters like Avorn Hardware, perhaps this room will be filled with another group of people who frequent that establishment and they will speak their mind and we can have a real process from the people who are affected and maybe the result will be that the bus stop stays where it is, but we'll have a real process and we'll have a good outcome and it won't just be because we did the work and I, with all due respect to the Transportation Board, they clearly did a lot of work, but I think even the gentleman who spoke who said he was, you know, ahead of that, who seemed to be taking this very personally, it's not personal, right, but when he said, maybe I didn't do it right, maybe you didn't, right? So let's be, you know, this is a, it's a wonderful town full of people who care, right, and many of them are here today and many of them will probably show up if we reopen the process, they care, let them come, let's find out what the real outcome should be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's David Zimbal, I live in the corner of Kenton Longwood here in Brookline and I think the key question has been raised both by yourself and even by Mr. Kane who said, you know, what should I have done, what notice should I have given, what is the right standard of notice? So I brought with me tonight, it's a plain English Attorney General's Guide to the Open Meeting Law and it says what the notice is supposed to be, it says, "Meeting notices must be posted in a legible, easily understandable format, contain the date, time, and place of the meeting," and then it goes on to say, "And list all the topics that the Chair reasonably anticipates twenty-four hours in advance will be discussed at the meeting. The list of topics must be sufficiently specific to reasonably inform the public of the issues to be discussed at the meeting." Reasonably specific. Now, I've looked at all the agendas for all the meetings that Mr. Kane held and they were extensive meetings and I applaud the efforts of the Transportation Board and the various subcommittees that put an enormous amount of effort into this. But part and parcel of having technical professionals run your meetings and set your agendas is that they speak in code, so instead of simply saying, "We're going to have a meeting to talk about moving parking spaces on Harvard Street," they say, "We're having a meeting to compare the CPTS proposed by the MBTA to the PTAC agenda items of last month," and I submit to normal working laypeople, that is a meaningless notice. So the question isn't whether this meeting is legally valid, the question is whether any of the meetings that they held meets the standard of notice under the Open Meeting Law and are legally valid meetings that they held, fifty-one meetings without giving adequate notice. I don't know whether they sent actual notice to the butchery or to the other establishments, none of them recall getting it, I'm a little surprised that the town doesn't have proof of mailing, most people would have that. Mr. Kane said, "I don't think I should be punished for, because I did everything right." Well, I don't think he did everything right, he didn't give effective notice, no one is punishing Mr. Kane. The people that are being punished here are the owners of the butchery and the people that are in this room that use the butchery. They didn't get an opportunity to speak at a meeting because they weren't given a fair chance to be heard because they didn't have any clue what was going on. I'm not suggesting for a minute that that was deliberate, I'm just saying that is the fact. So I would just like to mention two other things apart from the process, I mean I think quite clearly at the meeting we had in October, that every single one of the voting members of the panel said... voting members of the panel said, "I'm voting to protect the process. I'm voting to protect the process," with the exception of the chairman, who voted on our side. I would submit to you that protecting the process means you have to reverse because the process was broken from the beginning. Wasn't done properly. Now, ma'am, you mentioned, "Could you just eliminate that bus stop?" And I know we're not here to talk about other routes or other stops other than the one in front of the Butchery, but I'd like to give you guys, these are all the same photographs. This is the immediate preceding stop in front of the restaurant. I want to draw your attention to something that I think is called a knuckle. It's this protrusion that sticks out from the sidewalk, you see? So when the bus, this is the new bus stop in front of Rubens. So when the bus pulls in, it cannot be parallel to the curb. It's just high school math. You can't take a large bus, have it parallel, because it would have to drive over this sidewalk to do that. So what happens is, it sticks out. Now, you asked about handicap access. When that bus sticks out, the middle of the bus is now five feet from the curb. The handicap people cannot access that bus properly. They dip into this, off the sidewalk, into the street, and then back up onto the bus, which makes it very difficult for people to get on and off that. Now, why do I raise that tonight? This is not the issue tonight. I understand that. I raise it for two reasons. One, I don't think this was a well-thought-out process from just a practical point of view. And number two, the obvious solution is to move this stop to the other side of, what's the street there? Kenwood Street, and then where there is no retail establishment whatsoever, plenty of length for the bus to pull in, perfectly parallel to the curb. And then that's, by moving that stop a little bit closer to the stop that's in front of the Butchery, you could eliminate the Butchery stop, and you'd still be within three tenths of a mile of the, of the next stop in front of, or put the stop back in front of KI, and you'd be less than a quarter of a mile away. So there's lots of things that could be done differently. I know this is not the forum to plan out the Route 66 bus route, but there's lots of things that could be done if someone took the time and trouble to do it. And the last thing I would say is, we heard from the gentleman who rides the 66 bus, how many riders there are and all this. There's also a study by the MBTA that shows that very few of those riders get off in Brookline. People, the MBTA study says that roughly 10% of the riders get off in Brookline. They are really taking, most of the riders, most of the 14,700 riders in the 2009 MBTA study, use it as a way to get from one side of town to the other side of town. And it's not, it's not economically significant to Brookline for shopping. It's not, I mean, there are many reasons to be a good neighbor and to be supportive of the Route 66 bus, but the problems with that bus are not Brookline's problems. The problem with the bus, as the gentleman said, lie in Alston, where the route is incredibly badly designed. And I don't see Alston doing as much to fix the route as we're doing to fix the route. So as I said, I think the process argues for reversing the decision that was made by the Transportation Board in October. I don't think that fair notice was given to the owners of the Butchery or to the people in the room, and I respectfully request that you fix the problem by sending it back to be redone.
Thank you. Okay.
One more hand up. I don't know if you want to?
Sure. If you'd like to speak, come forward. You're going to be the last person.
Okay. This'll be really quick. I'm Abby Swain. I'm current chair of PTAC, and I was quite involved throughout this whole process, which we've heard a lot about. Just want to make a few clarifying points that may help you. One is that the Route 66 planning process was never intended to be a zero-sum game as far as parking goes. We knew we'd have to look at some sacrifices due to modern standards for accessibility, bus stop length, and that sort of thing. So it's regrettable to lose any parking spaces whatsoever, but we did try time and time again to minimize those and to focus losses in places where they didn't matter quite as much. I do want to point out the existence of the Fuller Street Public Lot, which is just around the corner from this particular shop and other shops in the area. I did a little reconnaissance when I was on furlough, I'm a federal employee, on October 11th, which was a Friday, at 10:30 in the morning. I counted 12 spaces free at that hour on that day, which would have been available to anyone. In front of the newly established bus stop in front of the Butchery, there was one illegally parked Mercedes with its alarm going off for quite a while, and an armored car idling. In terms of reopening the process, I'll just point out as a volunteer committee member that process costs in terms of time for volunteers. We're not, most of us, professionals, although we do get professional advice from Todd. And so the prospect of reopening this and rehashing it is quite punishing in the time sense, in addition to, in the emotional sense that I think you heard from Brian. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay.
Can I have a minute?
I don't think so.
I just want to pass in what I have all these petition.
Sure. Please hand them.
I have hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of petitions of people saying, you know, "Take this."
Thank you. Okay.
Like the bus stop.
Great. Thank you very much. Selectman Daley?
Yeah, I first want to say that I know that the committee, Mr. Kane, Abby, and others, and the Transportation Board put in a lot of tremendous hard work on this, and I do appreciate that work. And this is not intended as any slight of any of those members. But I think we do have, I mean, this is a grocery store. They're located in an area of town in which many of the neighbors are of the Orthodox community. And so that saying, well, they could go find a better location with more parking, well, yes, maybe they could. But this is, this is, they are trying to be located in the heart of the sort of Orthodox community in Brookline. And I drive by there frequently, and I do see older people using it. I also see a lot of mothers with juggling, you know, the kid in the stroller and another kid they're holding on to, or two or three of them. And I think that asking, it seems to me there is, there is a slight improvement in time for the bus to have that stop in front of the Butchery instead of prior to that intersection. But given that it's not a signaled intersection, there's no street light there, to, that benefit of having moved it is sort of small compared with the inconvenience of a lot of people carrying a lot of heavy groceries and looking to, to ask the people carrying all the heavy groceries to have to cross the street, to spare the people on the bus of having to cross the street. I don't know. It's a trade-off. I am going to vote in favor of the, in favor of the neighborhoods of the Orthodox community and moved, I'm not going to redo all the stops.
There's actually a draft motion, so why don't you hold off? It's premature. Other comments? Yes, Selectman Goldstein?
Thank you. I have a different outlook on it. First, I want to say that as far as the notice argument goes, let's put that to bed right here because this meeting was noticed, as the last speaker described. It was a great turnout tonight, and it's been a great opportunity and a lively discussion to discuss not the process, but the actual merits of the, of the location of this bus stop. And my decision, or my opinion on this is based on those merits, not on upholding the process as it's gone on to date. The loss of three parking spaces in front of the Butchery is, of course, not ideal for the Butchery, not ideal for any merchant to lose three spaces in front of their building. But in my personal judgment, it's not as bad as all that. The spaces were not set aside for the Butchery. Selectman Daley says that this is going to result in a lot of people carrying heavy grocery bags to their cars, but I disagree. There were three parking spaces there. They were used from time to time by patrons of the grocery, and time to time by patrons of other establishments. And the patrons of the grocery who got there by car parked in many of the other spaces that were nearby and available. So I don't think that the loss of those three spaces can be pointed to and say it's responsible for a lot of people having to carry grocery, heavy grocery bags. As I said, every merchant in, would prefer to have the street outside of their establishment ideal for their own. And unfortunately, it just doesn't work that way. We have to make compromises. We have to make decisions that are for the greater good. I would argue that, in fact, the putting the bus stop in front of the grocery might actually have some benefits to the grocery. And we heard mention of those at various points tonight. There is the opportunity for people doing a quick load, a quick pull over to the curb, to take advantage of that. And we all know that people do that in bus stops when there's not a bus there. And also, the availability for the ride and for other handicap drop-off also increases the utility of that for the greater good. The efficiency issue is admittedly minor, the time savings. And I understand the argument that was made that, you know, if this discussion had happened months ago, this might not have been a place that had been approved purely on efficiency grounds, because I think the seven seconds is something that we probably could have, could have done without. I think the most important issue, though, is safety, and I'll tell you why. So you ever see a school bus when it pulls over, and you see the stop sign that comes out, and you're supposed to stop and not, not drive past it? Well, that's one of the most common ways that pedestrian accidents occur, is people getting off of buses and drivers coming around buses who can't see past the corner, and that's how pedestrians get injured. And it happens despite the fact that the law prohibits it, that cars are supposed to stop, but they don't. It is far safer, and measurably safer, for pedestrians to get out and have their, and walk to the back of the bus, and walk behind the bus to the crosswalk, rather than where the bus stop was, and have the tendency be to walk forward to the crosswalk and then walk out potentially into traffic. I think safety is a huge issue here. I don't think that there's any countervailing safety issue, regardless of the fact that some people might have to, some more trips across Harvard Street might occur. I don't think it measures to the safety issue involved in safe departure from a park, from a bus, and then accessing the crosswalk right afterwards. So my vote is going to be to uphold the Transportation Board's decision on it.
Thank you. Selectman Banka?
Yeah, I reach a different conclusion, as I've already indicated. I think, first of all, that the idea of there being some advantage in having the bus stop in front of the Butchery so that somebody can pull over and quickly load is really inconsistent with how people shop. I mean, you, if you're, if you've driven your car to shop at a store, you have to shop. And you, and in order to shop, you have to park in someplace, then you shop, then you bring your bags out. I mean, that concept of a quick pull-over might work very well if there are two people, and somebody is circling the block while somebody is shopping inside. But the idea of having a place where you cannot park as somehow advantageous as opposed to a place where you can park, go in and shop, and come out with your bags, is not persuasive to me. With regard to the safety issue, I'm sorry that I don't have it, I had it loaded onto the town's computer and was going to be able to put it up on the screen, but the prior bus stop in front of Avorn Hardware was at least eight feet away from the crosswalk, give or take. There was a significant gap between the front of that bus stop and the crosswalk where people might cross. So this would not be a case, even if the bus stop were relocated where it was, which is an open question, this would not be a case of people walking out immediately in front of the bus into traffic. There was a significant gap between the southern end of the bus stop and the beginning of the crosswalk. I also, as I've indicated, have some concerns about what has happened in this entire commercial area. And that actually was highlighted to me by a member of the Commission for the Disabled, who sent me an email about the loss of the parking spaces in front of the Daily Catch on the other side of the street. And I forwarded that email to Mr. Corain. You know, this, this whole process, as I indicated earlier, resulted in the loss of spaces in front of the Butchery and in front of the Daily Catch and that block of stores where there would, I think, be a lot of need for parking, and it resulted in the gain of parking spaces in front of a bank that has its own parking lot. So as, you know, it's not before us right now, but I would vote to reverse the decision of the Planning Board, or of the Transportation Board, rather, on October 3rd to maintain the Route 66 bus stop at 428 Harvard Street. And I'd really offer the recommendation that the Transportation Board also consider the changes to stops on the east or the northbound side of Harvard Street. And I know that that's not before us right now, but that is, that is my suggestion. I think you can't, you know, you can't say that, that parking has to be a zero-sum game, but I think it's critical that we look at the impacts on parking when we make these sorts of changes. And I don't feel that that was given the consideration it should have been given in this case. And let me just add one final comment. Nobody is punishing anybody or criticizing anybody. I think what we were trying to do was to rationalize how individuals in good faith on both sides could say, on the one hand, notice was given, and also, I think in good faith on the other side, say, "I didn't know what was going to happen." And, and I think there is an explanation for that, but it's not a matter of punishing or blaming or criticizing. It's just an observation of how that might have happened.
Selectman Washinsky?
I've actually kind of gone back and forth. I think the Transportation Board and the PTAC did a phenomenal job examining the route from one end of town to the other, and we're only talking about one aspect of it. I think, there are, I, I think, I think the easy vote for me would be to vote, to vote with Selectman Banka, given the attendance in the room. But I think in the, in total, I'm going to agree with Selectman Goldstein. I think you need to look at the whole plan, and I thought the plan was very carefully thought out. And, and we're opening a bit of a can of worms. It's not so simple just to, we, it's going to be a bit of a process by which the stop is going to go back, and there's no guarantee that the stop is going to go back. And I'm inclined to agree with Selectman Goldstein on this.
Okay. Well, it sounds like the chair's going to break the tie. Actually, I'm supporting Selectman Banka and Selectman Daley for different reasons, frankly, but I, I have my own. I reviewed the recommendations of the MBTA Working Group, and I discovered that there is no mention of the Coolidge Street stop in their report. It only came up subsequently when the T brought in its 30% design recommendation. And it's not clear to me that at that point in time, that intersection was given very serious consideration by any of the endless public process that took place. So I am, in fact, accepting the notion So I am, in fact, accepting the notion that the notifications might not have had clear information in them that people who would be affected by this stop change could understand and therefore realize what the impact might be. And so I am saying that I, there's very clear that it was a thoughtful and thorough process, but I do believe it had a flaw. And I will therefore recommend that we overturn the vote of the Transportation Board, but with the, not recommendation, but the direction, which we as the Board of Selectmen have, which is to not allow any further decisions about the location of bus stops in this area to be done without full public participation of those people most affected by it. And it seems to me that maybe handing a flyer with a very clear dumb message, "Come to this meeting if you care about what happens in front of your property," would have at least alerted folks to the magnitude, from their perspective, of what this change might have meant. And it's very clear to me that people did not understand that. Having also read the report, I think the acronyms are confusing, and I can see why it's hard for the laypeople to understand what was going on. So, having said that, I've got a draft motion, which is to say, I move that we overturn the vote of the Transportation Board to not relocate the new bus route, new Route 66 bus stop inbound on Harvard Street at Coolidge Street at 428 Harvard Street back to its original location, which is to say, if you vote in favor of this, we will overturn the vote of October 3rd. So, all in favor, please say aye. Slekman Daly?
Aye.
Slekman Banka?
Aye.
Slekman Goldstein?
No.
Slekman Wyszynski?
No.
And that is the vote.
And the chair votes?
And the chair votes aye. Sorry. Thank you. Didn't mean to miss that. All right. We have one more item of business, so, good night, everybody. Leave us to our work. Hey, members of the board.
Walsh.
Walsh won.
Really?
By what?
Are we surprised? No.
Fifty-one, forty-nine.
Close, but I'm not surprised. Low turnout.
Walsh.
Really?
Walsh won, yeah.
Anybody want to suggest?
Yeah. I want to say I appreciate Mr. Farlow's revision. He took out the language I was concerned about, and I am prepared to move favorable action on his revised version.
Could I just ask one question? We're looking at now page 9.1, 9.2?
Yeah. I think so, yeah.
I had suggested, in the first resolve clause to Mr. Bassett and Mr. Farlow, the language, "Resolve the town meeting commends the Obama Administration for choosing diplomacy and negotiations to resolve the Syrian conflict," and urges it to continue vigorously pursuing this course in preference to carrying out a unilateral attack as originally proposed, as opposed to, instead of carrying out a unilateral attack. I'm not, you know, there's a subtle difference. Instead of carrying out a unilateral attack suggests that we are taking the position that that is not appropriate. In preference to suggests that that would be on the table.
What was your substitution?
It would be "in preference to" rather than the words "instead of." Now, I will tell you, Mr. Bassett did not like that change, but I, and, you know, in the grand scheme of things, what Town Meeting does on this resolution is probably not the most significant action that we are going to take at this Town Meeting. But I just want to suggest that.
Well, I will just say, I like, I prefer your language, but I, having, since the petitioners made a substantial change in connection with the language I was concerned about, I, I'm willing to vote for their version now.
Yeah. And I would add also, as I said at the last meeting, I thought that their citations to the UN Charter were not correct, and I note that they have taken all of those citations out.
Yeah, right. Other comments?
I'll agree with Slekman Daly's point of view, that I prefer Slekman Banka's language. I think we should reward the substantial efforts that have been made, given that...
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I don't think it's worth the effort.
Sorry. Had we had the opportunity to propose this earlier, I think maybe we could have...
Well, Slekman did.
Yeah.
No, I did. I ran it past the petitioners, and in fairness, the petitioners were not in favor of it.
Okay. All right. Then we have a motion by Slekman Daly to adopt the revised version as submitted by the petitioners. And I think that's the vote before us. So, all in favor, please say aye. Slekman Daly?
Aye.
Slekman Banka?
Aye.
Slekman Goldstein?
Aye.
Slekman Wyszynski?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Sorry. I want to say Wyszynski, because I was, I, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Good night.
All right. This concludes the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, November 5th.